All right, we're gonna get going here tonight. Now I'm gonna call to order this session of the Tacoma Park City Council. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Stewart.
Here.
Councilmember Kovar. Councilmember Dibala.
He's there.
Councilmember Kostic.
Here.
Councilmember Siemens.
Present.
Councilmember Smith.
Here.
Councilmember Searsie.
All right. All right, everyone is here. We just had our joint meeting with the Recreation Committee and the Recreation Department staff. And so we're a little slow moving over to here. There are no changes to our agenda this evening. I do wanna look at our agenda moving forward. We will not be meeting for the next two Wednesdays, next Wednesday, June 26th. I think most of the council will either be at the Maryland Municipal League Conference or the National League of Cities. So we will not be meeting. And then we will not be meeting on July 3rd, right before the 4th of July holiday. Looking at, our next meeting will be on Wednesday, July 10th. We will begin that evening at 6:00 PM with a visit from our County Council member, Tom Hucker. So we're inviting members of the public to attend from 6:00 to 7:00 PM. County Council member Hucker will give a presentation, and then there will be opportunity for Q and A. And so we're looking forward to that. As we discussed a number of months ago, we're looking at ways of having more interactive meetings before our council meetings. And we did this at a number of other occasions, and we'll try it with a member of our County Council and see how it goes. When we start our regular meeting at 7:30, we'll begin with a presentation from the Legal Services Review Advisory Group. They'll give a presentation. We had them convene a few months ago to look at the legal services we receive in the city, and so I'm looking forward to that. Our voting session that evening will be the First Reading Ordinance Adopting a Wage Scale for Management and Non-Union Employees. We have a number of work sessions that evening, including a discussion of the Housing and Economic Development Strategic Plan, which continues the conversation from last week. A discussion of the Parking Management Task Force. I want to underline, this is about the Parking Management Task Force that we had given the green light to for the Housing Department to start thinking about what that task force would look like. At that work session, they will be coming back to us with their recommendations for moving forward with the task force. We will also have a discussion of MML Legislative Action Requests and a discussion of committee appointments. On Wednesday, July 17th, we will meet here again at 7:30. We'll start with a voting session, a Second Reading Ordinance Adopting a Wage Scale for Management and Non-Union Employees, and a resolution providing for appointments to committees. Our work sessions that evening will be the Discussion of the Hazard Mitigation Plan, Discussion of Police Matters, and a Discussion of the FY 2020 Budget Amendment Number One. On Monday, July 22nd, we will have a special meeting on the Tree Ordinance and Tree Canopy from 7:00 to 8:30 PM in the Azalea Room that is open to the public. And so folks wanna attend that, please do. Then on Wednesday, July 24th, the City Council will have its regular meeting here, starting at 7:30. Our voting session will be a Resolution Adopting Housing and Economic Development Strategic Plan Implementation Steps, First Reading Ordinance Approving the FY 2020 Budget Amendment Number One, a Resolution Appointing the 2019-2020 Youth Council, Resolution Authorizing Submission of MML Legislative Action Requests, and a Resolution Adopting Hazard Mitigation Plan. Our work session will be an overview of Library Project and Discussion of Architect's Contract, a Discussion of the Council Compensation Committee, and the City Manager's Overview of City Projects. And then Wednesday, on July 31st, we'll have our regular meeting here at 7:30 PM. We have two work sessions, or I should be voting. A Second Reading Ordinance Approving FY 2020 Budget Amendment One, and a Resolution Setting forth the dates of the City Council Summer Recess. And then we will not meet in the month of August, but then return again in early September. I would like to note that one of the things that we had hoped to get in before August recess was to have a work session discussing the Tax Rebate and Tax Credit Program. Unfortunately, as we've been trying to put together some of the information, given staff responsibilities, getting the audit done, and other things, we will not be able to have that information in time to have a good in-depth discussion. So that will happen in the fall, and we'll provide more information on that soon. I will also say that I learned something interesting this past week. I talked to someone who does, talks to people all around the world, actually, about city council local meetings, and he said, "It's actually really rare to have someone read out upcoming agenda." And he's like, "When did that practice start happening?" And I said, "I have no idea. I just remember we've always done it." And he said, "It's very unusual. Most city councils don't do that." So, anyway, I just thought that was interesting. We do some, we always do something a little different here in Tacoma Park. All right, our first order of business is adoption of minutes for our April 15th and our April 17th meeting. Would someone like to move adoption of the minutes? Councilwoman Searsie moved it. Councilwoman Kostic, second. Any changes, discussion, questions? All those in favor of adoption of the minutes, please say aye. Aye. Anyone saying no, opposing? Any abstentions? All right. Now we'll go to public comments on voting items. We have a number of voting items this evening. The first is a Single Reading Ordinance Awarding the FY 20 Community Grants. Any public comments on that? Seeing none, we'll move to the next item. Our Single Reading Ordinance Approving the Purchase of a Leaf Vacuum. Any public comments on that? Seeing none, we'll go to our Resolution Authorizing the Temporary Partial Closure of Ann Street for the Crossroads Night Market on September 28th. Any public comments on that? Seeing none, the next is a Resolution Regarding Request to Donate Property to the City at 6507 Kansas Lane. Seeing none, do we have any comments on our consent agenda? We have a Resolution Appointing a Noise Control Board Member and a Resolution Appointing the Youth Council Advisor. Seeing no comments on that, we'll now move to our voting session. The first item is a Single Reading Ordinance Awarding the FY 20 Community Grants. This was a work session we did a couple of weeks ago. There have been no changes regarding the recommendations from the committee. Would someone like to move the ordinance? Councilwoman Dibala, move. Do I have a second? Councilwoman Kostic, do I have any changes or questions on this? Okay, seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll, or call the vote? Thank you.
Councilmember Kovar.
Aye.
Councilmember Dibala.
Aye.
Councilmember Kostic.
Aye.
Councilmember Siemens.
Aye.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Searsie.
Aye.
Mayor Stewart.
Yes. Next, we have a Single Reading Ordinance Approving the Purchase of a Leaf Vacuum. Someone, does the city manager have any comments on this first?
Yes, this was a late added item, so I'd just like to identify what it is. The Public Works Department was scheduled to replace a leaf collection vacuum in FY 20. They replace them almost every year, and it's, money for it is in the Equipment Replacement Reserve for FY 20. But unfortunately, they requested it and purchased it in FY 19, and it did not come before the council, and it's an item over $10,000. As soon as it was discovered that that happened, we brought it to your attention, and I wanted to get it before you, apologize for that error. It is a leaf vacuum produced by Old Dominion Brush Company. It's a sole source supplier for our leaf vacuums, which we check on periodically to see if it still should be a sole source. And apparently, it does interact with the other equipment that we use, and so it remains a sole source piece of equipment. This collects leaves as part of our leaf collection each year. What I've got before you is the ordinance to purchase the leaf vacuum for the Public Works Department after the fact. The quote is $35,408, and I recommend that you vote for it.
Great. Will someone like to move the Single Reading Ordinance Authorizing Execution of a Contract for Purchase of a Leaf Vacuum? Councilwoman Searsie, move. Do I have a second? Councilwoman Kostic, you're second. Any discussion of this or questions?
Can I, I have a question.
Yeah.
Did you, in your investigation, figure out what happened? How did this purchase occur?
Well, I think, yeah, I think it was basically overworked by a staff person, and it got missed. It's a part of a capital improvement item, piece of equipment. And one of the things that is awkward in our automated system is that there are not individual code numbers for each item or purchase, and so, and there's not a way for us easily to do that. So what we have directed staff to do more clearly is in the notes section, that they can then enter the exact wording as it shows in the CIP document, so that it's easy to match up and ensure that it's to be purchased, and it's to be purchased, and go through these various steps.
And so, in a purchase like this, the department head signs off of it?
That's right.
The finance department head?
Right, it goes, it goes through, it goes through internal in the department, the department head, the deputy city manager, and the finance department. I'll look at it, it was caught, but after the fact. And so, that's, it's good to have those eyes on it. I'm committed to transparency, so as soon as it came to our attention, we wanted to bring it to you.
All right, thank you.
Councilwoman Dibala.
Yeah, quick question. I looked in the fiscal '20 budget, and it says $30,000 for the vacuum and $5,000 for leaf box. Is this for both, or is this for just one?
I'm sorry, just the vacuum, so that's, it would need to be adjusted. Just a second, wait, wait.
Prices have gone up drastically as a result of the situation with steel.
Oh, hadn't thought of that. Thank you for answering that question.
Councilwoman Kovar.
Thank you, and I want to thank you for bringing this to our attention, as soon as you learned about it, which I think is very helpful. And I don't object to the sole source, and I think the purpose is one that probably we all support. I think it's meritorious that we do the things that we do with the leaves, with the leaf pickup, and I am convinced that there was nothing unethical or improper about it. I think it's still worth, however, just having a statement in the resolution that commits us to ensuring that that gets addressed. I think you explained, Ms. Ludlow, in an email, that this isn't the type of thing that would typically be addressed through a change in the ordinance, and we're hoping to get to the revision of the purchasing code eventually, the procurement code. But this is something that can be addressed administratively, and I think that makes sense for the level of it. I'd like us to have, and my colleagues can think about it, but I'd like to propose that we include, and I'll hand this around, a modified version of what I handed around before, but I'll just read it first, which is in one additional whereas clause, it's not in the resolved clauses, which would say, "Whereas the city council is committed to ensuring that city procurement procedures are changed to ensure that expenditures of Equipment Replacement Reserve funds are approved by the council when appropriate." And yes, it uses the word ensuring and insure twice in the same sentence, but I think otherwise it kind of covers that, and it leaves it to be resolved administratively. It puts us on record as wanting that. I'm happy to pass this around if people want to actually read it, as opposed to just hearing me say it really fast. But I would appreciate if my colleagues would support that, if we could have a vote on that at the appropriate time.
All right, well, an amendment has been proposed. Councilwoman Searsie, you had moved forward with the ordinance. Would you like to entertain the amendment?
Yes.
All right. We haven't moved, does someone have a second to the amendment?
Second.
Councilwoman Kostic, any conversation regarding the amendment to the ordinance?
I have a brief note. I think it's related to the whole thing and to the amendment. Yeah, I appreciate Councilmember Kovar's addition of this whereas clause, and I think it's useful to just make sure we're calling this out. I know it doesn't sound like there's a quick and easy fix within the system necessarily, but I think one of the things we talked about briefly was the idea of maybe requiring the ordinance number be required in some step along the way, so that there's a requirement of looking at the physical ordinance that the council has passed. It seems to me that might be a good solution, because I think, you know, mistakes happen, and there's always human error involved. So I think it's important to just have a process that sort of is foolproof, so you don't have those things happen.
That's right. So we are trying to get the right information in the notes section. It would probably have to have a different place for the ordinance number, but it's, you know, we're looking to make sure that there's check-offs all the way through.
Thank you.
Great, any other comments on this? Perfect. I'll just say I thank my colleagues for bringing this forward. I guess I'm just, and I apologize, I wasn't able to focus on this earlier today when the language was circulated. I'm just, I'm not sure, given my understanding of what took place, saying that we were gonna ensure that the city procurement procedures are changed, I'm not sure I'm ready to necessarily commit to that, given what was done here and what I see as administrative changes that need to be made. And so, I don't plan on voting for the amendment. Any other conversation or discussion? All right, all those in favor of the amendment, please raise your hand. One, two, three, four, five. All those opposed? Two. All right, the amendment passes. Any other conversation or discussion of the ordinance? All right, seeing none, will the clerk call the vote?
Hey, Councilmember Kovar.
Aye.
Councilmember Dibala.
Aye.
Councilmember Kostic.
Aye.
Councilmember Siemens.
Aye.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Searsie.
Hi.
Mayor Stewart.
Yes. All right, next we have a Resolution Authorizing the Temporary Partial Closure of Ann Street for the Crossroads Night Market on September 28th. Would someone like to move that? Councilwoman Searsie moved it. Do I have a second?
Second.
Councilmember Siemens, second. Any discussion? All those in favor of the Resolution Authorizing?
I'm sorry, mayor.
Sorry, I was gonna.
The reason this is before you is simply that it's going to last longer than previous night markets.
Yes.
And so the entire cleanup would be completed now by 11:00 PM.
Right. But the event ends at 8:30.
That's right.
So, all right. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oh, sorry. Do you have any questions on this?
No.
Oh. Any opposed? Any abstaining? All right, that moves. All right, we have a Resolution Regarding Request to Donate Property to the City at 6507 Kansas Lane. We had a work session on this last week. Is there any updated information?
Well, I just would like to highlight, I took the comments that you had at the discussion and added them into the resolution. And so one of the things that I wanted to just highlight were a couple points, that the donation was by accomplished musician and Tacoma Park native Milton Fibbs, who lived on Kansas Lane and recently passed away, wanted to donate his property to the city if the city would accept it for the use as a natural wildlife area. Well, it's not appropriate really for that in terms of the site. The city is greatly honored by the goodwill toward the city that was exhibited by the generous offer by Mr. Fibbs. And I know, the city council regrets that uses for the property that might have been able to advance his wishes in an alternative fashion were not able to be discussed with Mr. Fibbs before his death. And the city council wishes to see that the memory of Mr. Fibbs and an appreciation of his many musical contributions be made available to current and future residents of Tacoma Park. And in one of the, so in the be it further resolved clauses, so it would say that we're declining his offer, but that information concerning Mr. Fibbs and his career be conveyed to the Commemoration Commission in order to celebrate his musical contributions as a Tacoma Park native, and be it further resolved that information be provided to the public about options for making donations to the city, and encouraging those who might be considering such donations to confer with city staff in advance to discuss options that might work both for both the donor and the city. Thank you for your comments on the, at the discussion last week.
Great. Thank you, and thank you to you and the city staff for really looking into how we could have made this work. So we appreciate that. Would someone like to move the resolution? Councilwoman Kostic, do I have a second? Councilwoman Dibala, any other questions, or Councilwoman Kostic?
I just want to reiterate again, I said at our work session before that I'm very appreciative to Mr. Fibbs for this, this great donation that he wanted to give to the city, and I really appreciate the city manager's incorporation of our comments into this resolution. I think it really reflects what we talked about, and I'm glad that the information about him will be referred to the Commemoration Commission. I think that's very important. And I do want to encourage residents, if you're thinking about possibly leaving some of your property to the city, that's fantastic. And I think as much as possible to have those conversations ahead of time, so those details can be worked out, and we can find a mutually agreeable solution that works for everybody, that would be fantastic. So, thank you very much.
All right, all those in favor of the resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Sorry, I said aye. Any opposed? Any abstaining? All right. Next is our consent agenda. Would someone like to move the consent agenda? Councilmember Smith, move. Do I have a second? Councilwoman Searsie, second. All right, all those in favor of the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstaining? All right, we are on our way. That is it for our voting session. Now we will take public comments on other items. I do know we had a request for an extended time, if you would like to go first.
A month ago, you discussed a tree planting contract, and at that time, there was not a list available of the actual trees, the specific trees that would be planted. Since then, the city arborist has kindly made that list available to Peter Kovar, who forwarded it to me, and now it's in front of you, because I submitted it with my written comments. Seventy-six percent of the trees planted were non-native. Seventy-six percent, non-native. To me, this suggests that our procedures for selecting trees needs to be revised, dramatically revised, if we're going to reach a priority of more native trees. And it seems to me the way to do that, this, is to make the revision of the tree selection and the discussion of that objective part of this process you're talking about, to review the tree canopy, to come up with an implementation plan, review the tree ordinance. And so, in addition to making it part of that discussion and that process, I would specifically recommend that the council begin with a two-to-three hour learning event that would bring together not only our arborists, but also ecologists and environmental conservationists, so that we can better understand what role trees play in sustaining a healthy ecosystem. I think having that kind of event would accomplish two things. First, it would broaden the discussion, so we're not just talking about how many trees and getting some more trees, but we'd start talking about what kind, how do you sustain a local ecosystem, and why is that important to do, and what will we benefit from it? And secondly, people would appreciate much more what's at stake if we don't do that. In my written comments, I gave the caterpillar example, but I think we need a little bit more education and understanding of the issues at stake than that. I'm assuming you haven't made your way through the 1,000-page UN biodiversity report yet, but that certainly makes an important point about how threatened local ecosystems are. So if we do have a process like that and kick it off with some real education, I'm confident that that will entail or lead to very specific objectives about what we can do to promote native trees and an implementation plan. The DC Sustainability Plan has already called for a specific action to include native plants on all DC landscaping and property, landscaping of DC-owned property, and they have had a task force report on how to implement those objectives. I uploaded a copy of that report, task force report, today, so I assume very shortly you will be seeing what DC is doing in this respect. And I think that that will certainly be a vision for what it's possible for us to do, and maybe even a model. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other public comments this evening? Good morning, Mary Jean.
Hello, everybody. Happy June 16th, or Juneteenth, I'm sorry, because it's the 19th. Sorry about that. I'm here as a representative of parents with special needs adults, and also as a low-income homeowner who is concerned about gentrification, especially in my neighborhood, it's becoming more and more less diverse. All the dark-skinned people are lower, and lower income people are in the apartments. The wealthier white people are moving in, and they're, and as part of it is the developers, you're allowing these developers to come in and jack up the houses, change $400,000 houses to $700,000 and $800,000 houses. Why? Why are you allowing this? I mean, I don't know if you can do something. If I could do something, I would, but I feel like I can't do anything. And, and it's not good for anybody, really, because you're so young. And, and it's not good for anybody, really, 'cause it, there's a young white couple across the street from us who, who moved in after me, but they're making just a little over about sixty thousand dollars between the two of them. And they said they're having a hard time and have a young child, a hard time making ends meets. It's, it's not just the wealthy, it, it's like, it's just affecting everybody. And I'm sorry about it, and my son in particular. He's a son of a, a Kenyan immigrant. He's working hard, he has erratic work schedule, which is driving us crazy. No one cares about erratic work schedules, they care about the fifteen dollars an hour thing, which I, I applaud, but erratic work schedules are worse. You don't know from the day before where, where you have to go to work or not and what your hours are. They change it always on him. And if you've got autism like him, you, you're taken advantage of. And he's being taken advantage of, and he, he's not gonna be able to live in that house when I die. It, it's like, he's getting no help, I'm fighting with Development Disability Administration. People think I've got it easy, I'm sorry. We've got, we don't have it easy. And, and, um, anyways, and I would like to thank Jared. I, I watched on the new, um, on From Home last time, the meeting, your, your emphasis on mental health issues. I really appreciate that, because I think we need to look more at that. Especially what happened to that man in Silver Spring. And, you know, people think equate, and more and more with these mass shootings, people with illness like me are being blamed more and more, oh, we're horrible people. You know, it's not true, I mean, they're just, people are just evil. They're just plain evil people, and they don't have mental illness. And the people who have mental illness are more the victims of crime than their perpetrators. And please, please remember us. Thank you.
Any other public comments this evening?
Colleen Cordis, Ward One. And, uh, I just wanted to say, on the small cell tower issue, thank you very much. I know how hard you're, you have worked and you are working both on the ordinance and on the regulations. And I look forward to hearing, um, and we all look forward to hearing how many of, um, if you have been able to establish some new ways of tightening up the regulations and, and make, and increasing, uh, the protection of public interests. Because, um, you know, as soon as, uh, we know that, um, big corporations have plans for Silver Spring and Tacoma Park, and they know where we live. Um, the rest of my time, I'm, and I'm just speaking for myself here, I'd like to address this to, uh, to Nathan Campbell of Crown Castle and to Richard Rothrock of Crown Castle, to, uh, Ms. Janice Thomas of Verizon Wireless and Mr. Jerry Pasternak of Pepco, and all of the other, um, uh, people who work for the infrastructure carriers and the telecom, um, uh, both the carriers and the infrastructure folks. We understand, the people of Tacoma Park understand that the F C C restricts us, restricts our government from doing certain things. But the F C C does not require your companies to be socially irresponsible. So, we're gonna hold you accountable, not for what the, not for F C C compliance, but for paying attention to the growing body of research that indicates there are real health risks to your plans and to your products. And we're going to, we're, we are expecting you personally, as employees of your companies, to take this message into your companies and to lobby on the inside for finding some way of dealing with this. It's like climate change is not convenient for the companies to deal with it, but we all, your families as well as ours, rely on your companies being socially responsible. Corporate social responsibility is not about volunteering to clean up a park with a lot of employees or donating used equipment to low-income communities. It's about being socially responsible with your products and your ecological and your social foot- footprint. Um, and I'm, I'm sorry, Ms. Thomas, to look at you, because you are here. I am sure that there are others who will pay attention to what happened here tonight later. And as I said, we expect you as, um, you know, as, as, uh, folks who all share the same living space, generally speaking, we expect you to personally show some social responsibility. And we are going to hold your companies accountable for showing real social responsibility. Thank you.
Any other public comments this evening?
Good evening, I'm Janice Thomas, as, uh, my predecessor indicated, and I represent Verizon Wireless. I just wanted to, um, first address your comments, thank you for your comment. I think Verizon is welcoming the opportunity to work with municipalities, City of Tacoma Park being one of them, to make sure that we're welcomed in your community and that we respect the aesthetics and the health, and we are concerned about everything you highlighted. We make sure that we are in F C, in compliance with E P A rules. That is our primary concern, which is why often municipalities, including this one, is requiring R F E reports, which we will gladly furnish with our applications, as you've required, I think, in your guidelines that you set forth. Um, we are always in compliance with our sites, we do running analysis, um, annually to ensure that we are in compliance with the guidelines. Now, if they should adjust, we'll adjust as, as need be. If the, if the guidelines should change, um, in terms of R F E, and R F E, I'm sure everybody knows it's R F exposure, um, we will do so. The safety of citizens in all the communities where we deploy is extremely important. Um, I did want to address, uh, a couple of things that were, that arose last week in the public hearing regarding, um, fees. I know that was a question, and I wanted to say, um, the application, getting the application in time and fees and recurring fees, that is a main concern, as the F C C has highlighted, a safe harbor rate of two seventy. And anything above the two seventy is associated with the cost, is that at cost analysis? I know there was a question regarding escalation, and it's supposed to be cost-based. So, if the costs are in excess of two hundred and seventy, which is the presumptive rate, then the municipalities have to account for that. It's not saying, you know, if your costs are four hundred, then you have a right to charge us four hundred, but it's not a situat- to be in compliance, they've created these harsh safe harbor rates. Also, I see in your guidelines that you're charging a thousand dollars for an application when the F C C order, and you can, I can either give it to you or I can send you research, based language directly from the order, it's five hundred dollars for, um, a one-time non-reincurring fee, up to five applications, in addition to a hundred dollars for every application after five, after every site after five. Also, it's a thousand dollars for a new pole plant, which means you're not replacing an existing structure and replacing it with a tower, you're creating a new, uh, location where there wasn't one, in terms of a new light pole or utility pole or what have you. And those are the safe, those are the rates that are in the order, but are in conflict of what's in the guideline. So, that's what I was hoping to, um, engage in, I'll submit written comments, you can dig in deeper, um, to see what we're referencing. But we do wanna work with you, we don't wanna comment or take your community, we want to enhance the community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any other public comments this evening?
Hello, um, my name is Aaron Samsel. Um, I live at twenty-nine Philadelphia Avenue in Tacoma Park. Um, and I came down here tonight, uh, because Liz mentioned that she was speaking tonight about, uh, promoting biodiversity through city, uh, public works, planting and, and any other sort of related policies. Um, this is my first time speaking at a public, uh, city council meeting in my life. Um, I've, I worked a ten-hour day today and came straight here after work. And I recently decided that I would take more affirmative action to help protect the environment, um, because I'm pretty scared about what things will look like for my son, who's four years old and, um, and, you know, I want him to have a life that isn't based on catastrophe after catastrophe. And obviously, Tacoma Park isn't gonna solve, solve it by itself, but I think that we can do something. Um, and I think that we should be doing something to promote biodiversity and prevent the collapse of, of, um, of, uh, uh, species that rely on native plants. Um, and I think that we can set a precedent for other cities to follow, um, states perhaps. Um, and, and we can learn from others who are doing similar work. A few years ago, the D C City Council or the D C Mayor's Office did, um, uh, developed an action plan. I'm not certain that they followed the action plan or to what degree, um, it's sort of unclear on their website. Um, but I think that Liz submitted it through, uh, some sort of upload pro- process. I encourage all of you to look at that action plan and to consider how we can do something similar here in Tacoma Park. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other public comments this evening? Nope, okay. Seeing none, then we will move on to council comments. Come on, you know you wanna say something. You wanna plug the conference, go ahead. Councilmember Smith.
The first thing, I'm not plugging the conference. That's, that's the third thing. But let me, uh, thank, uh, the residents of Slagaville Apartments, six four one Houston Avenue, uh, M H P, the owner of the building, the property manager, uh, the wonderful Grace Wiggins, Lieutenant Gilbert, uh, for all coming out to talk to the residents about what's going on in the city, but, um, establishing relationships with the police department. It was a great meeting. Uh, we are planning on having more meetings, at least two meetings, uh, with residents, uh, twice a year. And hopefully, uh, we're gonna get a cookout on the calendar before the end of the summer. Uh, one thing that I do want to, um, mention, um, we are, uh, one of our longtime employees is retiring, um, Mr., uh, Moses Wells. And I just have some comments here that I want to share. Uh, Mr. Wells, um, worked with me very closely, uh, when I was on the, um, Commission of Landlord-Tenant Affairs. And he coordinated the commission for the city. So, here are the comments, uh, that I'd like entered into the record. For the past sixteen years, Moses Wells Junior has served as a landlord and tenant mediator in the Department of Housing and Community Development. He will be retiring from this position on Thursday, June twenty-seventh. Over the years, he's worked with hundreds of tenants, and I can testify to that, landlords and property managers, and has developed an expertise in mediating housing disputes. Uh, Mr. Wells has also provided assistance and education to landlords and tenants about city, county, and state housing laws. As a landlord and tenant mediator, he was responsible for working with the city's Commission on Landlord and Tenant Affairs. Uh, Moses leaves a rich legacy and great foundation for the Department of Housing and Community Development to build upon. So, it was fantastic working with Mr. Wells. He's helped, uh, many, many tenants in the city, uh, everything from, uh, trying to get your security deposit back uh, to, um, direct issues with the landlord. Uh, so, it's gonna be a big loss for the city, but I just wanted to make sure that, uh, it's on the record, uh, that, you know, we appreciate his service. And finally, I am gonna promote the conference. So, uh, starting Sunday, the Maryland Municipal League will have its annual conference, um, in Ocean City. Uh, this year, I am chairing the conference, so I am taking a, uh, an interest in it. Uh, so, please, if you're attending, uh, download the app. We have spent some time on trying to redevelop it. Uh, I am told that Alexa is up and running, so you can ask her some questions. Uh, but please come to the conference, starting Sunday to Wednesday, uh, it should be fantastic. Thank you.
Councilmember Kovar.
Thank you, and I will be at the conference, Monday, starting Monday.
Download it.
No.
Did you ask?
No. No, no comment on that. Yes, I will download the app, of course, I will download it. Um, just a few things I wanted to mention, thank you, um, Mayor and, 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 uh, Councilmember Smith. Um, number one, and I think maybe, uh, the city manager is going to mention this. Um, I was, uh, last weekend, uh, Councilmember Dibala was there, also at the staff appreciation program, and, uh, it went on for a number of hours, and, uh, it was great to see all the staff there. And I think sometimes we seem to be critical of the staff, but I know for my, for myself anyway, I appreciate all the work that they do and the dedication that they have to the city. And many, many times, they, they help me or tell me to not do something that might not be a good idea, and, and I really appreciate that. And, um, Cindy and I had the honor of, uh,
Oh, yeah, that was fun.
Doing the, uh, raffle, and there was a strangely inordinate amount of cologne and things like that. I don't know what that says about how they think of each other. But it was, it was a lot of fun to do that, and I'm really glad we got to be there. Uh, second, today was the Ward One Day at the Crossroads, uh, Farmer's Market. Um, the weather stayed nice, which is good. We had a modest number of people there, and, um, I think it really went, uh, well. It was great to be able to be there and to support the, um, market both, uh, financially and also just to sort of give them a boost. And one of the things that they did mention was that, again, this market meets down on Ann Street, um, which we talked about earlier, for the later closure in the night market, on Ann Street, which is down, uh, off of a university, and you can get there through Carroll. Um, on the third, July third, when they meet from eleven to three, there's also a special Independence Day celebration, even though it's the day before, so I encourage people to go there. Uh, two other things, um, some sidewalk repair has begun on the portion of Philadelphia Avenue, Route four-ten by Silver Spring, uh, Neighborhood Intermediate Park. It's gone a little way and then had to stop, and I think that's probably because of the rain, but I just wondered whether we could get a readout, if not at the moment. And I don't know whether, uh, Ms. Braithwaite could answer or later get back just on what it looks like the, the cycle's gonna be on that.
If you know, that's-
If you know now, if you don't have to do it now.
We had our, um, indefinite quantities contractor do the demolition in preparation for FlexiPave to do the, um, permeable surface. FlexiPave's schedule has been knocked back, uh, two weeks as a result of, um, the rains. So, they had hoped to be here this week and are not. Uh, so I think last I heard it's sometime next week, but it may be even longer. Um, so, we'll give, give you an update as soon as we get a, a final date. The, the area has been, uh, backfilled with gravel, so it's passable, uh, especially relative to what it once was. Uh, but FlexiPave will come in, do the surface and the retaining walls and, um, prepare the sidewalk.
The one thing I would say is, if it's possible to speed that up, because one of the reasons we wanted to do that was because it really wasn't too passable for, uh, those using, say, strollers or-
Yeah.
-wheelchairs. Now, it's probably less so because of the gravel. For someone who can, i- is ambulatory, it's okay, but, so if we can get them to speed that up, I would appreciate it.
Uh, we certainly, um, use all our tools in the toolbox, um, but weather is one of those things we can't control.
Okay, one last thing, then, thank you. Um, people have heard me refer a number of times, and the city council has, has taken action on it, which is the, uh, Montgomery College Math Science Building that has gone through a series of charrettes about the, um, design of it. And it's been a little quiet the past few months because the, after the County Planning Office provided their feedback through the mandatory referral process, then the architectural firm is working on it again. Uh, y- y- last night was the next in the series of charrettes. This one more on the exterior of the design. Um, the interesting thing that happened was that, um, and this gets back to something that we heard earlier tonight, I think because of steel tariffs and the increased cost of labor when unemployment is low, other factors, and the fact that the amount of money allocated to this hasn't changed at all. Uh, in order to proceed, it became necessary, and we learned this last night, for the architectural firm to reduce the square footage from a hundred and thirty-five thousand square feet to about a hundred and five thousand square feet. So, it's a cut of, something like, of, close to a third. So, it's the same general structure of the building, all the setbacks are a little more or further, and in some cases, the building's one story lower. And I think most of the neighbors who were at the presentation last night were pleased. Again, within the context of they had hoped that it would be in a different location, that's the location. I think it's, it's in a pretty good place in terms of, uh, meaning that metaphorically, in terms of how the building now looks. The one other thing I would say, and this is something that maybe the council will have to get involved in, people are concerned about is, um, construction. And once construction starts, obviously, right in the middle of a residential area, we're gonna wanna make sure that, um, the time for the construction and the noise abatement and all the other kinds of issues are properly dealt with. So, that's something that they're supposed to begin to talk about at the next charrette meeting, which is on the evening of July ninth, but right at the moment, I just wanted people to be aware that the structure has, uh, shrunk by that amount, and I think that's overall positive. Thank you.
Councilwoman Kostic.
Thank you, I have a couple of updates. Uh, today was the, uh, Transportation Planning Board meeting that we have monthly. And we had a- had a presentation on the Bus Transformation Project, which is a, uh, region-wide throughout the Metropolitan Washington Region, um, project to look at current bus service and improve it dramatically by 2030. And there were a couple of, uh, numbers that really stuck out to me as we were getting some statistics related to, uh, what they found on bus service, and one was that bus speeds have been reduced by about twelve percent, um, on average throughout the region, uh, mostly because of congestion, and that's, um, one of the reasons why, uh, dedicated bus lanes provide such an advantage, because buses can move more quickly and aren't stuck in traffic. And then the other figure was that about fifty-one percent of bus riders have a household income of thirty thousand dollars or less, uh, which is a pretty significant number, and we had a discussion briefly about that at the TPB meeting and, um, the equity implications and the need to, uh, focus on, um, improved bus service so that, um, people who do have low incomes are able to access jobs and educational opportunities. And then finally, we also discussed the role of the TPB possibly in being a coordinating, um, body for bus in the region. Right now, there are, um, a lot of different, uh, bus services in the different jurisdictions, and there isn't really a regional coordination between them. So, um, TPB might play a role in that, they might create their own sort of entity, but, um, there were a couple of different options discussed there, and we'll be looking more into that in the future. Uh, additionally, we discussed, um, uh, that the TPB has, um, onboarded a consultant that is going to be looking at, um, why there has been an increase recently in, um, fatalities, particularly for pedestrians, um, throughout the region over the past few years, what has been the cause of that, and what strategies might be able to, um, successfully mitigate that. And then I also wanted to just give people a reminder, take some time and look at your sidewalk and see if there are plants hanging over it. There's been a lot of rain recently, and the plants are sort of exploding, and just from walking around and also talking with residents, I've heard a lot of complaints and seen a lot of, uh, places where branches and flowers are overhanging over the sidewalk, so just take a moment to, to do, do that and trim them back a little bit. And then finally, uh, I am going to be at the National League of Cities meeting in Indianapolis next week, so unfortunately, I have to miss the MML meeting. I'm very, very sad to do that because it sounds like a fantastic conference. But I, I am going to be, um, meeting with the, uh, Human Development, um, Federal Advocacy Committee, which is a committee of NLC that focuses on, um, social service, um, advocacy at the federal level. And I'm also looking forward to taking a tour in Indianapolis of their, um, the construction of their new, uh, Bus Rapid Transit, uh, system. So I'll report back on that, and hopefully, we'll have some interesting new information on what's working for them. Thank you.
Uh, Councilwoman DeValle.
Yeah, follow up to what several other people said. Um, I will also be at the NLC meetings, I'll be at the Energy and Environment Committee meetings, um, so I won't be at the MML conference, but we have succeeded in getting, um, this Tacoma Park Street Light Project on the agenda, um, and Daryl Braithwaite will be speaking to that on, I think it's next Tuesday. Yeah, so thank you for doing that, uh, because I'll be in Indianapolis. Let's see. I was going to mention this later, but since there are, well, there were two, now there's one, uh, person who might be interested in this. Um, one, uh, regional effort that's going on with respect to trees and sustainability is the Metropolitan Council of Governments has, uh, put out a, a tree strategy, um, earlier this year, and there's a joint committee between the Energy and the, um, Chesapeake Bay Committees, there's a joint group looking at ways to follow up on that, and that does, I, because I'm on the, uh, I'm the chair of the Chesapeake Bay Committee, I, I'm familiar with what's in it, and I can tell you support some of what you were saying. Um, and if someone sends me your email, I'll, I'll be happy to forward it to you. Um, and the July meeting of the Chesapeake Bay and the Energy Committees for COG is going to be a joint meeting, and it's going to be about trees, so I'm looking forward to that. Let's see. And last but not least, well, two things. Um, Lincoln Avenue, we're just about done, apparently, with the actual sidewalk work, but the stormwater facilities are going to be another few months because parts have not come in, and therefore, they can't be installed, so just update on that for people. And last but not least, um, when Councilmember Kovar brought up the July third, uh, Crossroads Me-, uh, Crossroads Festival, uh, he neglected to mention the corn contest. Yeah, so some of us will be eating a lot of corn around noon on July third. Um, that's it, thank you.
Councilmember Siemens.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you. And, uh, last week, I had the pleasure of joining my wife to go to the Capital Area Food Bank Partners Luncheon, and, uh, we were surprised to find that, uh, Joyce was selected among the four-hundred-and-fifty partners with, uh, Adventist Community Services, uh, for the award of Partner of the Year.
Wow.
Thank you.
That's really hard to talk about.
How could I follow that?
You can't. Councilwoman Cersei.
Wow, that, yeah, that's a hard act to follow. Well, Joyce is a hard act to follow. Um, so, good evening, everyone. Um, a couple of quick things. Uh, I know that, um, the mayor mentioned during the last council meeting, um, and unfortunately, Janice, um, you had left the room. Um, you had mentioned in your presentation last week that you noticed a number of wires throughout the city that were hanging. A number of them are unidentified wires, um, that are from various utility companies. In your comments, um, regarding the ordinance, if you could make note of what Verizon Wireless is willing to do in the city of Tacoma Park to identify any wires that it owns that is no longer in use, and the steps that it plans to take to remove them. That would be wonderful. Um, we have a lot of telephone wires that belong to no one.
Ms. Cersei, I'll, I'll just note, um, that, um, I, I reached out to her, and she said Verizon Wireless doesn't have wires.
Wires, so-
So I tried to emphasize that it does need to be a all utilities hands-on deck-
Everyone, and I get there's a difference between Verizon Wireless and Verizon the parent company, um, but in my eyes, you're all the same. I, I, I mean, you are, sorry. You're different, but you're not. Um, so if you can contact your partner at Verizon or send an email to someone, um, because I think it's important, I know that you're here to fight the good fight, um, for Verizon Wireless, um, but one of the challenges that I have is seeing what has been done in the community through Verizon. So when the technologies such as phones were the hot thing, and there were wires all over the place, and now that they're no longer the hot thing, we're left with a bunch of wires, and no one takes ownership of them. So when we're talking about small cells, one concern that I have is what happens when, when these, when these boxes are no longer in fashion? Who comes to get them? Who takes them away? Um, so these are some concerns that I know I have, and so if, it's, it's kind of hard for me to, to trust, um, when I don't have answers about something, some other antiquated technology such as telephone wires. So, again, I understand what you're saying in terms of your Verizon Wireless, and you're not the same as Verizon, but I pay you both, and I just want to know what's going on with the phone wires throughout the city. I have no idea. Yeah, that's the problem. So, yeah.
All right, are we not doing this?
We're not doing that. But anything that you can do to ensure that Verizon does not have any, I would appreciate it. That, that would make my life a little easier, um, because these are some of the issues that we are facing, right? So we have to deal with what happened in the past and try to anticipate what's going to happen in the future. Again, not, not picking on you, but I, I think it's important for you to kind of understand the environment in which you're, you're living with, right? Um, and so it's, it's really hard to trust when we've seen what's happened in the past, okay? Um, I will be eating corn on July the third, um, and I will also be at MML. All right, thank you.
Thanks. Councilmember Seaman. No, you're dead, yours already. Do you want to say something else? All right. Um, okay, I just have a couple of things this evening. The first is I, I want to note that, um, unfortunately, our community lost, um, a longtime member, um, uh, recently, um, Pauline, uh, Grazzi Walker, lived in the Franklin Apartments since nineteen seventy-five, and, um, so we just wanted to, um, extend our sympathies to her family. Uh, her husband still is at the Franklin Apartments, um, and so, um, I was just thinking, as we talked this evening earlier, uh, about members of our community who have been here, um, a long time, so. Um, some other things, I will be at the National League of Cities in Indianapolis with, uh, Councilwoman Kostick and DeValle. Um, this year, I've, I have the privilege of chairing the, um, Racial Equity and Leadership Council, and so we'll be doing, um, two days of training with that council on, uh, racial equity work, and looking forward to it. Um, starting, um, after, uh, when we come back from our, uh, break, uh, we're going to start up lunches with the mayor again, uh, so please be on the lookout for, um, information. On July twelfth, we will be at Sardi's. On Wednesday, the twenty-fourth, we're going to be at the Crossroads Market. On July twenty-sixth, we'll be at Tiffin, and on August sixteenth, at, um, El Camalito, and then we'll pick up again sometime in September. But these are just opportunities, low-key, come, share some lunch, conversation, get some updates, um, what's happening, um, let us know what's happening in your neighborhood and your neck of the city, so I hope to see people. Um, that's it for me, I'll turn it over to the city manager.
Thank you. I have a number of items, um, on my city manager comments, and then I got a few extra ones in, so I'll just go ahead, since we're not going to meet for the next two weeks, I need to get them in. Uh, but first, I'll start with the fact that the, um, Tacoma Park Recreation Center on New Hampshire Avenue, um, will officially be part of the city of Tacoma Park. The, uh, commission, the By County Maryland National Capitol Park and Planning Commission formally approved the land swap this morning, and, um, so we will, they, they swap with an undeveloped parcel that's on Longland, Long Branch for them, and, uh, so essentially, the rec center becomes ours on July one. Now, there may be a date or two different for the, um, filing of the deed. Uh, we are looking to have a small gathering to kind of do a ceremonial transfer, and I'd like to coordinate with, uh, Councilmember Cersei on a good date and time, uh, with parking planning as well. Um, it, it has been worked on for a really long time. It's a great step forward, it's a way to create New Hampshire Avenue as a bridge and not a divider, and it's one of the few places along New Hampshire Avenue in a, where there's a public property that can help spur, uh, redevelopment in all of our interests. So, um, I'm really pleased about that. I do know some of the members of the Montgomery County Planning Board, which is part of the commission, uh, really noted that it was, in their view, uh, a real step to raise equity, uh, in this part of the county, and they're happy to see it take place. So that was very nice. Let's see, on July seventeenth, Suburban Deer Management Presentation, the popular presentation from before about how to make deer less welcome in your property, uh, will take place July seventeenth, six-thirty PM, in the Azalea Room here. Uh, George Timko from Maryland Department of Nat- Natural Resources will do the presentation. It will last about thirty minutes, and we'll have a Q and A. As I said, it was really well received before, and I'm sure many people who don't necessarily want fawns born on their property will be interested in, yeah, I've been keeping hearing from people that had that event, so not, not me yet. Yes, yeah, that's, I'm not going to say that out loud, but yes. The mayor mentioned that the, uh, discussion of, uh, tax credit, property tax credit options will be postponed until after the summer, um, break. I wanted to put it in here in written form because I know many people are interested in it, and, um, you know, this simply reinforces, I feel like for the last week, my standard reply on almost everything is we don't have staff capacity to handle whatever issues coming up, so this is a tough time for us. Uh, we're a little short-staffed, and we have a huge plate full of things, and, um, this is one of those things that we're not able to do in, in a good fashion, um, right now, but we want to do right, uh, very early in the fall. Wanted to simply note that the old John Nevins Andrews property is on the tax rolls. It's, takes a lot of work, actually, to go from ha- being an exempt property to actually being on the tax rolls, it seems. Um, we've pushed to make sure that it gets evaluated, it had been evaluated, um, the school prop- property owner has received the bill for the property, so, uh, the taxes for Tacoma Park are likely to be about thirty-four thousand dollars, and so, ready to have that there. Yes, ma'am? That's, that's, uh, that's the assessed value of the property, is, um, six million, three-hundred-and-sixty thousand dollars, yeah. Um, I note the Maryland Municipal League Convention next week, that a number of the councilmembers will be, uh, the program does look pretty interesting, and then give Councilmember Smith, uh, lots of credit on that, he put a lot of emphasis and, and got his team moving on it. Um, Tuesday's Tacoma Parks Day in the sun, uh, or in the LED spotlight. Uh, the, um, Public Works Director, Daryl Braithwaite, will do a presentation on our LED, uh, streetlight program, which is unique and wonderful. It's at eight forty-five in the morning, so you wake up and go for it. Um, and then in the afternoon, um, Chief, uh, Police Chief Tony DeValle will be a panelist on the one-thirty PM session, Strategies for Enhancing Police-Community Relations, and there's been a lot of work that we've done on that, so it'll, I think it'll be a really interesting presentation. And so, looking forward to that. Uh, the Deputy City Manager and I will be there. The Deputy City Manager has duties for the Maryland, uh, City-City Management Association, and, uh, and I really appreciate the networking opportunities as well. Wanted to do, uh, uh, two items that aren't on here, uh, or three items. One is that we have, and it was briefly mentioned when the Rec Department, uh, mentioned some of its programs, we have a free game design and coding camp, um, that's coming up. Our, um, Economic Development Manager, uh, is working with the Rec Department to, um, bring this free program for youth this summer. Uh, it's facilitated by Code Partners, who's working with us on workforce, workforce development. We have a waiting list. This thing, as soon as we announced it, got packed, they're working with us to expand the number of students that can participate in it. We are investigating a follow-up camp because really, it's, it's popular, and it is a neat program, and the kids, once they're completed, they get the laptop that goes with it, I think, so it's a nice, or, nice program. On, um, June twenty-sixth, from four to six PM, we have a free marketing strategy workshop. The Latino Economic Development Center will be, um, having a workshop for entrepreneurs and small business owners in Tacoma Park, so we're getting word out on that. And, um, also on June twenty-sixth, um, June twenty-sixth at ten AM, and June twenty-seventh at seven-thirty PM, we've got a special presentation on, um, renting your condominium. How do you do that? What are the rules in Tacoma Park to do that the right way? It's a joint program between the city and the county to put that on, uh, and I really appreciate, uh, Ms. Wiggins, uh, pulling that, uh, program together. She also wanted me to mention, um, Moses Wild's retirement. Uh, I've worked with him for the sixteen years that he's been here, um, and he, he has been, um, a solid, um, connection for renters and, and landlords, and he, one of the things that Councilmember Smith didn't mention is he also had a monthly column, uh, in our newsletter that was very useful to people. He also did sometimes those Facebook Live things, which was always, always fun. I wanted to give, uh, two kudos, one to the Employee Appreciation Committee, Peggy Washington of my staff, kind of coordinated it, um, on, and it went really well, and it was wonderful to have Councilmembers Kovar and DeValle there handing out their raffle tickets and, um- I, I don't know if that was a message, like, did we need it? I just- I, I don't know if that was a message, like, did we need it, I just really wasn't, but, but, we got a deal, I guess, so appreciate that. Um, I also wanted to give kudos to our Finance Director Susan Chung. She finally gets to put the SCPA at the end of her name, she has worked on this for a long time, and this, the steps are lengthy. Um, but I do appreciate that for her, I'm happy for her, but I also appreciate her attention to the highest standards of financial accountability and transparency, and her deep commitment to the City of Tacoma Park, and the council, and the residents. Um, she does a great job for us, so, those were my comments.
Great, thank you. We'll begin now with our work session, the fir- we have two tonight, and our first one is a discussion of regulations for the installation of certain telecommunications facilities and equipment in the city right of ways, and we have a returning guest, um, oh, you're gonna sit here tonight, okay. Sit there, yeah. Oh, okay. Great, so we have, uh, the head of our Public Works Department and Mark Del Bianco is returning, thank you very much. We appreciate you being with us again this week. So this is, um, I'm gonna turn it over to, um.
Sure, um, uh, Ms. Braithwaite is gonna lead the discussion as the, um, staff person responsible for enforcing the ordinance through the administrative, administrative regulations. Um, she's the, the best person to speak to, um, where we are, um, and I, I, it's my understanding she's gonna provide an, an overview, um, of what we will be, um, considering changing in the draft, that was before you and discussed last week, um, as well as some other highlights and answers to questions that other councilmembers and members of the public had.
Great, thank you, and I just wanna, um, say thank you to both of you and also members of the public, and, um, I believe I'm correct because I talked to the Deputy City Manager about this earlier, I want to particularly thank the members of the Community Vision for providing detailed input, and, um, we will be providing, um, a reply, a written reply to that, so, um, because I don't, I'm not sure, given the hour today and the fact that we have to do the tree ordinance, we'll get to everything, um, but we want to make sure that we do, um, respond to you. So if you don't hear it tonight, um, we'll get back to you, um, so with that, I'm gonna turn it over. I don't think you're on. No, you're on, yeah, you're on, yeah.
Appreciate all the effort that's preceded, um, us here this evening, um, you haven't heard from me yet, but I do feel like we're ready to catch the ball and, um, proceed with this, uh, regulation and implementation. Um, and the, um, input, the reviews, the discussion has been, uh, illuminating, very helpful, and, um, it's obvious that folks have put in incredible amount of effort and concern and thought into what's, uh, before us. We've provided, uh, responses to the questions that council submitted on the, uh, draft regulations. Uh, we've also developed responses for the Community Vision comments and some of the other public comments we received. I believe council has seen those, and we'll be sharing those with, um, Colleen and other Community Vision members as soon as it's ready to be, uh, sent out. Um, just some notes, some important clarifications, um, we, we do, uh, agree and can easily, uh, adjust to provide notice of an application upon receipt. Uh, currently, the regulations, uh, were previously drafted to be once we've determined that the application was complete. Uh, we intend to set up a webpage, kind of similar to what we have for tree permits, but a little bit different, uh, so that there'll be one place for residents and interested parties to go to find out anything about, uh, telecommunications applications. So as soon as we get one in, we'll create a, um, an identification number for that, list it in it, with its address, with a note that it's received. As soon as it's reviewed and upon completion, we'll update that information to say it's complete, and that will also carry the information about the public meeting notice, uh, and the, and the next steps, so that people can, uh, go there and find out uh, anything they need to find out about the status of that, and then, uh, once a permit has been issued, that information will also be available on there. Uh, that will, uh, be a evergreen kind of thing, it won't disappear, it's gonna be there permanently. Uh, we intend to put the RF emissions test, uh, result information also at that same location, as well as the annual testing, and if there's any other additional information that becomes available related to that site, uh, we can, uh, include that information. That kind of leads me into the second clarification, it was the city's intention, uh, and it was in various places in the ordinance to hire an independent, uh, consultant to do the RF emissions testing. Uh, so we've been assuming all along that that would be a, a practice that we would put in place, and we'd been assuming that it was the city's responsibility to do the initial test upon, uh, activation of the antenna or, uh, cell tower, as well as the annual inspection, so we'll have that information, uh, overseen by the city through our consultant, and, um, uh, have that information available, uh, as it's required. Um, some issues, uh, that were raised, um, by the council, uh, some of which would require changes to the existing ordinance if we wanted to, uh, consider implementation, and so we're, be happy to go through those, uh, this evening as, as you want to raise them. Uh, particularly issues related to the distance, um, uh, for notification. Um, some of the, uh, additional information related to, um, a location of the sign or the timing for the public notice of a sign at the intended location, uh, we can implement those without changes to the ordinance and, and agree, I think it was, uh, Councilmember Kostick who had suggested that there be a timeframe associated with that, so that's something that we can easily add to the, uh, regulations. Um, Mark and I are prepared to answer any questions previously asked or anything new that comes up, and, um, my understanding of the process from here is based on the discussion tonight. The, uh, draft regulations will get one more round of revisions and then go to the City Manager, uh, for, um, a final look, and then we'll be able to present those as the final regulations and, and go through that process.
Sorry, Mr. Bianco, do you have anything to add, or?
I don't, but I stand prepared to answer any questions you might have.
Great, terrific, um, I open it up to my colleagues, Councilmember Kovar, you wanna kick us off? You look ready.
Thank you, and thank you, uh, Ms. Braithwaite and, and Mr. Del Bianco for, uh, spending all the time on this. Um, uh, and I appreciate the references that were just made to the four or five, uh, points that, that would be changed in there. And I think there were a few other, um, questions that had popped up, that if I read the responses correctly, were also, uh, you thought were doable or would make sense to be in there, so I'm just gonna really quickly run through those. There were the, there was a question about, um, consultation with the committee on the environment, where it sounded like you agreed that that should be, would be part of this as a sort of a standard piece, so that's good. Um, there was a question about, the language said when, uh, material is affixed to a pole, all these requirements would happen, but in some cases, it might not be a pole.
That's correct, and we can easily change the language to broaden it.
So it was on some other structure, okay. Um, and there was a question about, um, not wanting to obstruct or impinge on sightlines, and I believe that you had indicated that, eh, expanding on that to include auto or bi- bicycle sightlines and so on would, would be appropriate as well, right?
Yeah, the language in the ordinance will, will mirror in the regulations, which is fairly broad.
So it seems like there are several categories of potential changes, some things that aren't in the ordinance, so we couldn't do them in these regs. We would have the, uh, opportunity in the future, I suppose, to, uh, make additional changes, depending on what we decide to do. And then there are other things that we might want to do, but that would run afoul of what the FCC had in the ruling, and then there are other things that maybe we would want, but that you might find challenging from a staff bandwidth point of view. Eh, and, and then there are some that you've agreed to do, so I just wanted to ask a few others because we talked about them, and I'm just not sure I got a complete understanding. I, I really appreciate what you said about the independent testing of the RF, um, because I think that's really important. And obviously, as referred to earlier, there are questions about, should the RF emission standards be updated, but they are what they are now, and we'll have that done independently. So I think that's especially important for, for, uh, public health, so, um, this is something I really care about, and maybe others care less about it, but the experience that we've had with the construction projects in the city of late, which includes Pepco and WSSC, and the lack of coordination, and we had specifically in the ordinance some language on that. And, um, I think the idea is that in general, putting up one pole probably isn't a long, lengthy process that would affect or interact in a bad way with other construction, but if there were, for example, a large number of poles being put down a long distance on the same street, it could. And so, that's something that I think ought to be reflected somehow in there, so, uh, any thoughts on that?
Well, yeah, again, until we actually get these applications in front of us, we don't really know what to expect. We have some assumptions based on the things that we've seen to date. Um, one general assumption is that most of the, we anticipate most of the applications we receive will be for antennas on top of existing poles, and our ordinance, uh, reflects that assumption, that primarily this will be, um, pole-top antennas with, um, equipment cabinet somewhere nearby, either on the pole or on the ground. Um, we watched the, uh, antenna be installed at Sligo Creek Parkway, just, uh, to the north of, uh, New Hampshire Avenue with interest, because that was kind of the first one we were aware of and watching, and it was just a couple hours with, uh, a bucket truck, um, off the road. Um, so we don't anticipate many issues, construction conflicts related to this. That being said, if it is a multi, uh, you know, entire block area or a new pole situation, they certainly take a little more work, um, and will require a little more, um, in terms of equipment and, um, manpower than, than popping an antenna on top of a pole. Um, we feel like we have the ability, the way the regulations and the ordinance is written, so that we can put conditions in the permit if we determine that this is, uh, something a little more complex, and, and that's, uh, a common practice of ours. We usually have, uh, permit conditions that, uh, kind of get to the specifics of the individual application.
Okay, thank you, and would the same thing apply to the pre-construction meeting, which again was in the ordinance, not explicitly called out in there, but if you saw a need for that, you could demand that, is that right, as part of the condition?
Certainly, I mean, usually, pre-construction meetings are an opportunity when you have multiple contractors, multiple parties involved in a project where everybody gets on the same page, you get the county inspector, city engineer, the contractor, their subcontractor, and y'all kind of have a little pow-wow, make sure everybody understands what's going on. In these cases, we pretty much feel like it's gonna be a Crown Castle one-man show, where they'll be there putting the antenna on. There isn't gonna be a lot of consultation, they will already have had permission from the Pepco, uh, to use the pole if, if they're using a Pepco pole. Uh, but in cases where it's, uh, more complex, we can certainly ask to, uh, have that established.
Alright, thank you, just a few more quick ones, and then I'll, I'll defer to others. So one of the questions that arose, um, and I think, uh, Community Vision mentioned this also, is, um, insurance, they're required to have insurance under the ordinance. I'm sympathetic to the idea that we ought to do more than just say, hey, you ought to have insurance, and we ought to somehow ensure, EN, that the insurance with the I is sufficient for what is necessary, so is that something that we can build into this?
We might both want to take a crack at it, uh, uh, again, that's not my area of expertise. Um, one of the, one of the points that we were trying to raise in our response was that in the case of diminished property value, or potential health impacts, or those types of things, we really feel like that's gonna be a legal matter that is settled by a court case or not. Um, it won't be an insurance coverage matter, because basically that'll be heard by a judge or jury. Uh, a, you know, claim will be made, a decision will be, be rendered, and then whoever the responsible party is will be directed to, uh, make whole or, uh, resolve that, that judgment.
So the only concern would be if they go bankrupt and then all these ugly things are sitting around, is that, is there a way to get to that in this?
I, I think I can address that, it's probably not a realistic possibility. Uh, these are very large companies, and you're talking about a very small amount of money compared to their actual turnover for sales for the year, or net asset value, whatever measure you want to use. So, eh, I believe that requiring insurance for, say, diminished property value or for, um, a couple of the other types of things that you've mentioned is essentially, um, pointless, I guess, to, to be blunt. Uh, it's not, it certainly imposes additional staff, uh, work, because you have to make sure that the insurance is in fact, you know, in, in effect every year or every two years, whatever the renewal period is. Um, and you'd, you'd have to, somebody's gonna have to make a decision about how much you need for something like that, but, but the reality is, if there are RF emission problems, it's not gonna be just homeowners in Tacoma Park or residents of Tacoma Park that have, uh, a claim and, and have some sort of damage. It's gonna be nationwide, and there, there's going to be a big litigation, and somebody's going to pay, but it's not really gonna be, it's not gonna matter whether there's insurance related to Tacoma Park, same thing for, for loss of, uh, of value of property.
Alright, two other things, and I'll defer to, to my colleagues. Um, there was one question there, Ms. Braithwaite, maybe you can answer this, it said you would have to make a determination, or the determination would have to be made, eh, that the proposed telecommunications installation was adequate for the, the purpose, and I just wondered how that would be determined.
Is this relative to the issue of a replacement pole, existing pole or new pole, I'm not sure what?
I thought it was just connected to the new, the new application, Mark, do you know?
A new pole? Uh, the ordinance identifies two criteria that, um, an applicant would have to meet in order to, uh, do something other than install on an existing pole. If they wanted to replace, uh, an existing pole with something different, larger, is the, is the assumption, there would be a height issue. Or if they want to install a new pole where there isn't one before, and they basically will have to make a case that, um, in order to provide the coverage and the service level they're trying to reach, based on the need they have, they'll be able to identify the, the pole height or the location, um, requirements based on that level of service. Um, the design engineers who are coming up with their deployment plan will be fully engaged in identifying existing pole locations or poles that are insufficient, either structurally or from a height perspective and need to be replaced, or, or where they don't exist. It's hard to imagine in a city like Tacoma Park that there'll be a place where a utility pole doesn't exist. More, more likely that there'll be a utility pole that's a little too short. However, Pepco's gone through a, seven years ago, um, a, uh, utility pole resilience enhancement, and so most of the utility poles in Tacoma Park have been increased by five to ten feet, some even more. So our assumption, again, uh, before any of this sort of hits us, is that most of our poles have been replaced. They're gonna likely be large enough, and we think we're gonna be dealing primarily with, uh, existing pole installations.
But you would be able to be part of the assessment of whether they're adequate?
No, it would be in their application, they would have engineers stating that they need this type of height and this pole wasn't sufficient, or they needed this location, and here's the reasons why, based on their coverage and their megahertz and their this and that. I mean, we certainly have the ability to bring in, um, expert advice if we have a question as to whether or not, what they're providing in their application.
So we would be able to do that if we needed to, okay.
But, uh, having seen these applications in the Montgomery County Towers, uh, they are dense and very engineer-y's.
I'll stop, and, and I might have a few questions after, but if other people want. No, because I, I need to figure out with my notes, so, thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much for all the effort here. So I think this, to me, this does meet the spirit of the resolution and the ordinance that we, that we established in the first place. And, and I think we've pushed as far as we can to still, and still stay within the limits of what's, what's required, so I really appreciate that balancing act. Um, I had a couple of questions, one related to what the woman from Verizon brought up earlier. I'm assuming that we have, uh, you don't have to tell me what it is now, but I'm assuming we have a justification for the different fee structure that's proposed.
Yes, we do, we, in, in our staff discussions when we were drafting these, we raised that question, and we have, um, hourly rates and number of hours involved and so on, that I would assume could, could be shared on a friendly basis with any of, of the, uh, companies that are gonna be doing wireless attachments.
In addition to that, in the, in the response to the council questions, we list out pretty specifically, um, fifty to sixty dollars an hour, seventeen to twenty hours is our assumption, based on what we know so far, and we listed, uh, I think there's ten different things that would be covered in those, uh, seventeen to twenty hours. Uh, we may be underestimating, we think this will require a significant amount of time, because it won't just be one person. We'll have the city engineer, the urban forest manager, the construction manager, all going out to the site, uh, early on in the process, and depending on what's there. out to the site early on in the process, and depending on what's there, maybe only one of them needs to deal with it afterwards, maybe all three of them need to deal with it throughout the process. Then, of course, there's the public meeting, and the attendance of the public meeting, and the response to questions, and then the communication with the applicant. So, it, it will easily use that amount of time.
And the independent consultant who will be doing the annual testing.
Right. We, we anticipate the charge, and the ordinance says that the applicant, or the owner, will, will pay for the, for the testing, so that is part of what we assume is in that five-hundred-dollar annual fee, the right-of-way maintenance and administrative fee. We see that as going towards the annual testing, the maintenance of that information, and any other kind of site maintenance that the city may be required to do.
There was some talk earlier about other permit processes, and whether there might need, might want to be some adjustments to that, and I don't think we need to do that right now. Let's get this through. But that would be a question for you for some future date, what, what other adjustments we might want to make.
Sure. And we need to sit down with city attorney and see what, what all was intended when the ordinance was drafted, since it is in the existing part of the code where utility permits live.
And you and I talked briefly about this. Do you want to say a little bit about how you see the, the impact, if any, on right-of-way trees, and how you want to, how you think that will be handled?
Sure. Understanding that the ordinance puts quite a emphasis on trees and tree protection, it'll certainly be an issue that we'll be looking at in the inspection of the site, once we get an application. Just as a general matter, of course, while it is true, thank you, that high-frequency, you know, these, these antennas don't work well in a heavily forested area, our assumption is that the applicants on the carriers will be taking that into account when they select locations. That said, and again, assuming that they're going to be putting these on existing utility poles, those poles are owned by Pepco, the electric utility. The electric utility is required by the Public Service Commission to maintain certain standards related to clearance for both their poles and their wires. So, that's going to be happening regardless, and has happened for decades, regardless of whether there's an antenna on it or not. So, all the tree pruning, tree clearing already happens on a fairly regular basis as a requirement of the Public Service Commission around the, the electorate, electric company's utility infrastructure. In the event that these antennas are put on other structures within the right-of-way, I don't know what they would be, but it's, it's our assumption that shade and tree canopy won't be affected by the antenna itself. It has already been impacted by the presence of the utility poles and the electric wires, and there will be no further harm done related to the telecommunications piece of it. That said, you know, it's certainly something that we pay close attention to anytime we're looking at utility work, and, and we'll take that into consideration when evaluating the applications.
Okay, two, two more quick things. One, with respect to the Committee on the Environment, Councilmember Kovar used the word consultation, and I thought we were talking about notifying them and leaving it to them to decide if they would be involved, not formal consultation.
Well, yes, but certainly if they had a member or members on the, on the committee that were knowledgeable or informed or interested in participating, we would certainly receive any comments and feedback. We will notify them. The ordinance says, boards, commissions, et cetera, it's our assumption, based on the list of boards and commissions that the council's established, the Committee on the Environment is the likely board to receive any of this, so didn't see a need for it to be spelled out specifically. There may be a change in the Committee on the Environment, maybe called something else in the future, but at any rate, we certainly are aware and work with them on quite a close basis, so we'll notify them when applications come in, and if they have questions, they can certainly participate in the meetings, or we can discuss any questions they have.
Okay. Finally, there was a couple of references in the notes that you gave us, two items in the ordinance that might perhaps need to be amended as technical corrections, so can I assume that at some point we're going to see something? As a, again, as technical corrections, not as policy changes?
In terms of the ordinance change, I guess that put that back in the city manager.
I think that would be scheduling.
I think this is scheduling issue, I think it's also, I don't know if Ms. Braythwaite, now that you're on the tower commission, or Mr. Del Bianco, I know you've also been working with some advocates in the county. I also think it may be wise, you know, this was incredibly labor-intensive project, we undertook this fall. My recommendation to the rest of the council is to put the regs into place, see how things start to work out, and then see if we get any information on what the county may do. I, unless there is something very specific that our Director of Public Works would ask us to change in the ordinance right away, I think it is to our advantage to take the approach of, kind of, let's see how the regs work, see what happens at the county level, see what happens with some of these lawsuits, and then revisit. But I'm also open to any other insights or recommendations.
The only item that I can think of that might not be able to wait, and we could certainly have a quick discussion here of how to handle it, is that the ordinance says that the equipment mounted on the pole has to be at least fifteen feet above ground level, and not, and that would include, but is not limited to, the antenna, which is probably going to be on the top of most of your poles. But any other equipment that ends up being on the pole, I understand from Mr. Chamberlain, who works in DBW, that the, there are specific state rules, and may even be federal, but as to where on a pole certain types of equipment can go. And it's my understanding from talking to him, that the, anything that is on there from a wireless carrier, other than the antenna, which can, has to be above the electric wires, would have to be between 10 and 15 feet in height on the pole. So, we have written this regulation saying it has to be at least 10 feet. There is a discrepancy with the ordinance, which says it has to be 15 feet. But apparently, you can't put any equipment other than the antenna above 15 feet. Am I describing that correctly?
That's our understanding.
If, if I can ask a follow-up question on that, then I would assume that there's some deference to state and federal rules, that if we're not quite consistent, that on certain things, it would, we would need to follow that state rule.
That's correct. That's correct.
So, I think that sometimes happens with other parts of our city code.
Okay. And any sense on what's happening at the county level, or?
My understanding from speaking to people involved in the process is that the expectation that there would be quick action has proven incorrect, and I'm hearing that there's likely not to be, you know, barring some kind of change, there's likely not to be action probably the rest of this year. And at that point, there may be inertia setting in and saying, let's wait till we get a decision on the appeal of the FCC small cell order, which is being briefed right now. I think final briefs are due around Labor Day, maybe, maybe even earlier. I know the first round of briefs were filed a couple of weeks ago. So, I would expect a decision in that Ninth Circuit case, maybe by next summer, whether that will be a factor delaying the Montgomery County regulations even more. I can't tell you, but it seems pretty likely. Unless there's a huge number of applications from the carriers, and Montgomery County decides they have to do something.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Councilwoman Searcy?
Hi. Quick question. I don't know if it's quick, I'm never quick. So, I'm trying to make sure that I understand identification going forward. So, I keep stressing this, this whole point of what happens if, and it's primarily because, although it's highly unlikely that someone like Verizon, or whoever would go under, if we're identifying the, the actual facilities by someone like Crown Castle, there's a greater risk. So, my question, and technology moves really, really fast. Something that is the creme de la creme this year, five, six, seven years down the line will be antiquated, and it's, it's, you know, it's, it's not hot anymore, and someone's moving on to something else. And so, what's big for me is making sure that we don't have what we just talked about, or what was discussed during comments. We get down the line where people don't know what they own. Or if Crown Castle, heaven forbid, falls under, you know, making sure everyone knows who's responsible for what. So, are we talking about, and I, I checked in the appearance section, aesthetics section, and I don't see, like, identifiers or labels identifying who owns what. And is it because there, there'll probably only be one per pole because of the requirements, and then we can refer back to the application? Or is, is it possible that there could be many on a pole, within, depending on how tall that pole is and, and the like? I'm just trying to make sure that we can ultimately link an actual small cell to its owner. And it's not contingent on going in the paper files, or in someone's inbox to figure out who owns what.
Well, we will have the permit record in the application, so that'll be a starting point. But beyond that, I mean, I, we envision that most of the labeling will be done on the cabinet itself, not on the pole, because a pole is really Pepco's pole. So, Pepco is not going to allow anybody to put their name on their pole. However, their equipment cabinet is theirs, and it's only going to be theirs. So, Verizon's going to have its equipment cabinet, Comcast is going to have its equipment, they don't share. So, that is where you'll see the label, that should be clearly identified. We'd ask, we've asked for it to have an identification number, as well as a 24-hour contact information and an email address, so we're anticipating that information will be on the cabinet.
On the cabinet itself. Perfect. Thank you.
Just a few more things. Appreciate it. On that point, with, with the labels being more than one language, can we have that?
I don't know.
I will say, that's not really a legal issue. There's no state or federal law governing whether you have to or can't have additional languages. That would simply be a choice of the council.
I think it would be helpful. On the trees, which came up earlier, I think we have a situation where if a tree has to be removed currently, unconnected to cell towers, now the department, your department has agreed that there'll be a posting of some sort, so that would apply, same as, I don't know whether.
Yeah, we're speaking specifically for right-of-way trees, yeah.
Yeah, okay. And then, so there's this question of which, which requirements can be waived in certain circumstances, and it says public health can't be waived. And I believe, Mr. Del Bianco, you responded to my question about whether public notice can be waived, and is that something that's not part of the application, so it's not really, it doesn't fit? Is that, is that the?
The, the waiver clause is in Section 4, which identifies what has to be found by the director in order to grant the application. Section 3 is the section that covers the application and review process, and there's no waiver provision in Section 3. So, you can't shorten the period, or, or dispense with the public hearing, or anything like that.
Okay, okay. And, and now, people have asked about this question of whether the coordinator, or the actual tower commission, or tower coordinating group, whatever the correct name is, should be the one that gets conferred, that we confer with, but I gather that's what we said in the ordinance, right? That it has to be the coordinator, not the group. Is that, is that right?
That's correct, and, and that would only become an issue if, for some reason, the coordinator made a recommendation that was not followed by the group as a whole. Otherwise, they'd be making the same recommendation.
And on the distance, for people to be notified within 500 feet, that was also what we put in the ordinance, right? So, there's nothing to stop us as council members or others to spread the word more widely, but in terms of requiring the companies to notify the people, that's in the ordinance.
Correct. So, you'd have, that's one of those areas where you might want to revisit after the ordinance has been in and effective.
And, and just one last question, and this is the last question. On the section of the regulation that deals with the potential for public benefits to be provided in exchange for a reduction in fee or some other benefit, we don't really have as much, and maybe this is just an oversight in the ordinance, as much of a public process to make that determination, as I suppose maybe in retrospect could have made sense. And that's what the ordinance says, but it's kind of up to us what we do, right? Because that's not something the negotiation would be with the company, but we could convene a public meeting if we wanted to. Is that, is that your understanding?
That certainly is my understanding, yes.
So, I'd like us just to commit that we would try to, we don't have to decide what it is now, but just try to ensure that if it ends up that there are ever any negotiations of this kind, that we try to bring into it the residents that are most affected by it.
We want to keep that in mind, if, if in the future we change ordinances, I, I can assure you that that is not a decision that I would make, even though, given the language in the ordinance with the consult to the city manager, I think both she and I would feel quite strongly this is a matter of public interest and council interest.
Thank you. Thanks, Mayor.
I just have a quick question. This is for you, Ms. Braythwaite. What's going on with the tower committee? I mean, how, have you had any meetings yet?
They meet monthly.
Okay.
And they have been meeting monthly for quite a while. We just, the city just got appointed to the commission, or committee in May. May was the first meeting, there was one meeting in June, there's a meeting in July.
And so, what's the process? Can you give us a sense of, do the companies come and present to the committee?
Typically not. We're reviewing their applications, and their applications are generally 60 to 120-page documents that are very, very technical. Each application is received by the tower committee group. People can comment on it, ask questions, review it.
Is it open to the public?
I, I would assume so, as most meetings would be. They have both an, you can come to their, their conference room where they hold the meeting, or they have a call-in. When I attended the meeting in May, I called in. That one, they only had six applications. This one in July, they have over 60.
I don't think there's public comment.
Okay. You can be there, but you can't.
And their minutes are posted, and their information and decisions are posted.
And do you have any idea the backgrounds of the other committee members?
I don't.
No? Okay. All right, thank you.
Ms. Braythwaite, I just have a follow-up question. Not the writing of the regs and everything, but now that you are on the tower commission, and there are 60 applications coming up, and given the length, how much has this added to your workload?
Well, it will. It hasn't yet. The unfortunate part is, we were reminded that regardless of whether or not there's a Tacoma Park application in the mix, I'm expected to participate. So, that'll be my, my afternoon on July 12th, or wherever it is, yeah.
Right. So, I guess I just, the point I want to make to my colleagues, and also the residents who are listening, is that it's great that we're, that you're on the tower commission. I think that was something that we had requested and wanted to do, but that is time that, and, you know, at least an afternoon a month, and possibly more, that you'll not be here in the city, but working on that, and probably needing to review these applications and other things. And that is not, my understanding, that is not money that we can, are going to be able to recoup, because of the money that we'll be able to bill regarding the rates, and not bill, but get back in the rates and everything, is when you're working on a specific cell tower in the city of Tacoma Park. So, I do think, like, that, you know, when we are thinking about these things, I thank my colleague, Councilmember Kovar, for kind of putting these things in buckets of, you know, like, what, what can we do based on the ordinance we passed? What are things that, you know, we can't do because of FCC or other legal constraints? And then what are things that, you know, in ideal world, we may want to do, but we only have one of you, and we want to keep you. And so, we also need to think about workload and capacity there. And I do think these are all things, as we've talked about, that this landscape is changing. I'm glad here in the city of Tacoma Park, even though it was a lot of work this fall, and I thank Mr. Del Bianco for his assistance, that we did pass our ordinance, that we are moving forward with our administrative regs. I think it does set us up in a good position, and I'm glad we decided not to kick this can down the road, and that we actually are addressing this issue. And I thank you both, and I thank the residents who have provided input, and I'm, I'm sure we'll be coming back to this in the future.
Mayor, I would add a comment here. I was just asking the director, how many of those 60 are small cells? She's not certain, but she thinks that perhaps all of them are. So, earlier you were asking me about what Montgomery County's going to do. If their small cell applications are going from six to 60 and continuing to grow like that, I think they will move faster than I suggested a few minutes ago, but I just don't know. But I just don't know how many they're getting.
Great. Well, thank you. Thank you very much. And I have to say, Mr. Del Bianco, the fact that you are in the area and I know working on this does help me sleep better at night. So thank you very much to both of you and also to our deputy city manager for all his work on this. We're going to switch over now and talk about trees. And so I know Ms. Braithwaite will be with us, and we'll have our urban forest manager join us. And I, did we get the PowerPoint all figured out?
You're going to start it off.
All right. And on this one, my colleagues, council member Kostick, Dabala, and Kovar have been really helping to shepherd this along. And I'm going to turn it over to Councilwoman Kostick.
Thank you. I think I'm actually doing the end of it. One of you is starting, aren't you? Otherwise, I can do the first two. No, it's okay. I can sit. I'm sorry.
I'll do the first two pages.
Sorry.
I'll do page two and 31.
So this is page one?
Just did that.
Trees.
There we go. All right.
All right. I was going to.
Sorry, we figured it out. Trees. We're talking about trees tonight.
I was going to do the first two pages, and then we're each going to take two pages. I think that's right. So this is just the very beginning of what should be a lengthy process and a careful process and a process that will involve a lot of engagement with the public. What we've started talking about, and this is the first night I think we're really going to be delving into it in a significant way, is doing three things going forward, and they're all interconnected. One is, for the first time, having tree canopy goals and trying to figure out how to preserve and grow and maybe spread around the city in a more equitable way, the tree canopy. The second one is to take a pretty deep dive into the tree ordinance and try to ensure that it's as user-friendly as it can be. And part of that is making it more easily understood. Part of it is making some changes that might make it more fair or more workable. And I think everybody will have a different view of what that would mean. But I think that's the second part of it. And then the third part of it is, we want to help promote better understanding on the part of residents of tree health and tree maintenance and how that works and to have a more active engagement process to the extent that we can with people, not on the changes we're talking about now, which we do want to, but on an ongoing basis if you have concerns about trees in your yard or what you might want to do with them or which ones you want to grow, whether there's a way to get the city to assist with that. So to me, all three of those things are interconnected. And that's what we're going to be talking about in a more detailed way, starting tonight and continuing on further. And I think Councilmember Kostick will talk about the schedule. And then we can look at the next slide. And here are the three interrelated goals that I just talked about. So I think I finished my part.
When we started talking about this last October, and we identified some initial areas where we already had a lot of feedback that we might want to consider adjustments. And that would be, starting with what can and cannot be appealed, what the definition of hazardous is, and how it relates to defining hardship that has to do with fees and waivers. So what, when you can get a waiver and what the circumstances are. There's been a lot of discussion, comment on the replacement tree formula. What is it? Why is it? Can it be adjusted? Does it account for different types of species? And last, but not least, timeframes for the process and for decisions. Some of these are ordinance things, some of these are process things. But this is part of what we were looking at when we first decided that this was a priority. And we made a point of involving the tree commission and the committee on the environment in this. And they have formed a joint subcommittee. Two reps, two of the three are here tonight, I think. Don't all jump at once. And they will be making recommendations on the tree ordinance and how, and whether and how to amend it at our next meeting in July, July 19th, I think it is?
22nd.
22nd. And they'll be talking, talking later about the specifics, the details of a tree canopy goal. And they'll be talking on, in July, about an overall vision of where we're going. So that you might want to look at it as, here's the big picture. Are we maintaining? Are we shrinking? Are we getting bigger? Are we, what is our purpose as a vision statement? And then some of the details and how you measure it would be something we tackle later.
And here is our tentative schedule, just to give people an idea of how we anticipate this work going. So from January to May, and closing on May 31st, the online resident survey was open, and a number of residents, a large number of residents, responded to that. We'll get a little more information on that tonight, I think. And there's also information online, online summary of the responses as well as written comments. The tree commission and committee on the environment also had meetings and discussed their recommendations that they plan to give to the council and have been working on developing those. We're having our meeting tonight on June 19th. And as Councilmember Kovar pointed out, the point today is more of an overview to sort of get us started on this topic and set us up so that in July, we'll be ready to meet with the committees and discuss more in-depth at that point. On July 22nd, as Councilmember Dabala said, we'll have a joint meeting with the tree commission and the committee on the environment to discuss tree ordinance recommendations from them, as well as how to approach setting tree canopy goals. And then we'll have our August recess, but we'll come back in September and have a work session, one of those Wednesdays, to have a council discussion on the direction that we are thinking after having some of these earlier discussions and hearing the recommendations, where we're thinking kind of on an overall big-picture process in terms of what direction we want to take with tree ordinance amendments and the initial tree canopy work. Then in September and October, we'll have ongoing public input. And we'll be working, after kind of having that council discussion, there'll be an opportunity then to work with the tree commission and the city attorney on drafting specific wording that we might like to look at for the tree ordinance amendments. In October and November, having another work session to discuss those specific wording recommendations and see what we as a council think, getting public input through a public hearing and possibly some other input opportunities. And then coming back, probably after the December recess in January, to have a vote on those tree ordinance amendments. Simultaneously to all of that, the tree commission and the committee on the environment would be working on their recommendations for the tree canopy goals. And we would, in winter of 2020, be receiving those more detailed recommendations related to the tree canopy goals and discuss next steps in terms of that. So that's kind of the big picture. And I'll turn it over to Ms. Braithwaite, and we can hear more.
We need, we need just a second, I think, for City TV to switch the.
I just wanted to take a minute to kind of lay out what we are planning to do this evening. Jan Benzutven, our urban forest manager, is going to do the presentation this evening. We're going to start with kind of the report synopsis that we had available earlier this year. In March, there was a public meeting related to the tree canopy. We think that it's important to kind of set the framework of what we learned with that pretty in-depth analysis and assessment about the state of our tree canopy. So we're going to start just briefly with that report summary and then go into the specifics of the tree ordinance, kind of a tree ordinance 101, where we kind of lay out through a PowerPoint presentation what the specifics of the tree ordinance on include. And lastly, if anybody's got any energy left, then I can do a quick summary on the tree survey. I did send to each of you this evening the ward-specific tree survey response. So we have the overall tree survey response, which had 500 respondents on the council webpage. We'll certainly add that to the tree ordinance page. We do have a tree ordinance page on the website. And then you all have your specific ward-related survey responses as well. So with that, I think we're ready on the PowerPoint.
Thank you so much. Good evening. My name is Jan Benzutven. I'm the urban forester at the city of Tacoma Park. And I want to thank you for the opportunity to present here tonight. As Darrell mentioned, I'll be doing a brief overview of the tree canopy assessment seminar that took place earlier this year and the presentation that Noah Ailes with the University of Vermont gave. So the first, the second slide is about why do we care about trees? I think all of you are familiar with a lot of the things. Just a comment about that is, you know, particular, the size and structure of the canopy is key in providing the benefits and of trees. What is our tree canopy worth? This is from iTrees. It's an USDA forest service software suite that provides analysis and benefits assessment tools for forestry, for foresting community trees. And so this is, these dollar amounts are based on an annual, an annual basis. And so replicating these, through traditional gray infrastructure, replicating these benefits would be extremely costly or even impossible. So there's a lot of benefits to the tree canopy that we have in the city of Tacoma Park. So based on the assessment that was done, the city's tree canopy is 58%. This is a very robust, robust canopy, particularly compared also to other jurisdictions in the local area. All right. So there's a bit of a mix-up of the slides. Okay, sure. Okay, yeah, thank you. So the comparison, the tree canopy assessment that was done this year was done previously in 2009 and also in 2014. And again, the basis of the, sorry. So the city has a stable tree canopy of approximately 60% citywide. One thing to note is that the tree canopy assessment and the 59%, it's a lot easier to show loss of canopy if a tree is removed. It shows immediately where it's growth. It's much harder to note in an assessment, particularly in, you know, the timeframe, 2009 to 2018. It's a relatively short time span, particularly if you compare it to the life of a tree. This is an aerial image of part of the city in 2017. You can see, this is Maple Avenue over here, and then over here, this is Lincoln Avenue. So the high-resolution imaging is overlaid with LiDAR data. So that's what we see here in this image. So it shows different categories. It shows tree canopy, grass, shrubs, bare soil, water, buildings, roads, and then also other paved areas. So the next slide shows the tree canopy distribution by height, starting with the lighter areas with the shortest trees, and then the darker areas show the tallest trees. This is area of the city is Sligo Creek, the Sligo Creek corridor. And this is the Long Branch corridor. So you see in that area many large canopy trees. Now, one thing to note is that the larger trees provide a lot more ecosystem services. So another thing that this is beneficial for, you know, locating the larger trees for preservation and estimate in the age of the forest stand. This is, again, the high distribution of the trees. In the horizontal line, that's the height of the trees. And then on the vertical axis, it's the number of trees. We can see that most of the trees in the city of Tacoma Park are between 40 to 90 feet tall. One thing that this does not show is for the smaller, the younger trees, if they're small canopy trees, trees, medium canopy trees, or large canopy trees. So that's information that could only be, you know, obtained through, rather than a top-down inventory, a bottom-up inventory. This canopy distribution slide shows the pets classes in the city of Tacoma Park. Pet size is important for the ecosystem services that tree canopy provides. Again, this is the Sligo Creek corridor. And you see, you know, that's associated with the large pet size. Then more residential communities like this area over here where Garland Avenue is and Central Avenue is.
Could you describe what it means to say a patch size?
Yeah, sure. Yeah. So that refers to tree canopy, the size of the, so large pet size is large clusters of trees, as you see here. So that's the Sligo Creek corridor. Medium-sized pets size is more like clumps of trees, and that's in residential areas, as I mentioned. And then the small pet size is one or a few trees. And it's a little bit hard to tell, but there's a few in the neighborhoods here. So again, the large pet size of tree canopy, the ecosystem services, the watershed services and wildlife habitat, from that perspective, it's very important. This is a slide about the canopy pets class by acres. And we can see that the largest by far is the medium pet size. And I'll get to that in a little bit, but that's closely associated with the fact that medium-density residential is the biggest area of tree canopy in the city of Tacoma Park. This slide provides information on the land use classification and distribution. There are seven in total that are listed over here, commercial, deciduous forest, high-density residential, industrial, institutional, medium-density residential, and open urban land. And one takeaway from this slide is that by far the biggest land use area in the city of Tacoma Park is the medium-density residential. This slide provides information on the tree canopy metrics summarized by land use. The information provided here is the existing tree canopy in dark green, the possible vegetation canopy area in lighter green, and then the possible impervious tree canopy area in light gray, and then not suitable in dark gray. So what this, so this, the vertical axis is the area in acres. So what we can see for the medium-density residential area that approximately 550 acres of forest are in that particular category. And that's by far the largest. It also provides the largest possible vegetated tree canopy area where people can plant on private property.
Point of clarification. I think that this means theoretically possible.
Correct.
As in every ball field filled with trees.
Yeah, so I'll get to that a little bit more in a second, but, correct, this is possible. It doesn't mean that, actually in reality, it's possible, but it's a potential. Correct. Yeah. So for, if you look at the deciduous forest in Tacoma Park, obviously that's very densely forested. So the possible, the possibilities for planting trees in that area are minimal. Then we see for high-density, actually for institutional and open urban land, there's a bit of place to replant trees, but a lot of times it's not desirable. but a lot of times it's not desirable because of the recreational fields and so forth, to your point. The next slide provides information on the ownership categories in the City of Tacoma Park. There are seven ownership categories that are listed here. So the Board of Education owns a bit of land in the City of Tacoma Park, Montgomery County Community College, the City of Tacoma Park, the National Capitol Park and Planner Commission, Montgomery County, and then private and other, and the ROWs. By far, the, the biggest area of land use is the, the private-owned property. And then the next one is the, the city right-of-way. The next slide provides information on, again, tree canopy metrics summarized by ownership type. Again, the same four categories. And we see again that in the, the private category, there's the largest amount of tree canopy and then also the largest possible area for tree planting. There's, you know, with park and planning, the city has, you know, that's approximately 10% of the tree canopy in the City of Tacoma Park. The city has no or very limited control over that. The, the private amount of tree canopy is approximately 74% of the overall canopy. And then, as I mentioned also previously, for education, that includes quite a few recreational fields. So here again, the existing tree canopy by ownership, private is 74%, the ROW, that does include some state right-of-way, but the majority of the 13% is city right-of-way. And then park and planning, it's approximately 10%. And then the city around the buildings is approximately 2%. The existing tree canopy by ward. So the highest percentage is in Ward 2. And that's not a surprise because the, you know, Sligo Creek corridor and also the Long Branches corridor. So then for Ward 6, there's a large commercial presence. That is one of the reasons why the tree canopy is lower in Ward 6. Ward 4 has a lot of educational areas or buildings. And then Ward 1 and Ward 3 have very robust tree canopy and primarily residential. The next slide provides information on the possible vegetation tree canopy in, by ward again. Again, the, the biggest increase possible realistically is in Ward 1 and Ward 3 through planting on private property. Then in Ward 6, there's also quite a bit of tree planting areas that are possible, but the commercial area limits that to some extent. Ward 2 is probably a bit lower again because of the forested areas where already a lot of vegetation is, a lot of trees. The next slide provides information, again, on tree canopy metrics summarized by each ward. Again, the same information-
Excuse me, could I ask one question?
Absolutely.
Can you define what possible impervious tree canopy area means?
As opposed to non-suitable?
Yeah, so, you know, possible vegetated tree canopy area is, you know, those are fields, grassy areas. So these are areas that are currently impervious that could be turned into pervious areas. So a small example is, you know, with some of the roads where areas have been turned into stormwater treatment facilities and then trees have been added. So that would be one simple example. So there's definitely an area, you know, and that's also the, the non-suitable where, you know, buildings are, you know, the bigger major roads, where that's really obviously not, not possible at all.
But is a parking lot considered unsuitable?
Parking lots might be suitable depending, you know-
So they could be possible impervious, a parking lot? Because you could convert it into a non-parking-
Right, yeah, correct.
Okay.
Yeah, so particularly with some of the newer parking areas where they add biotension areas with tree plantings, that might be, there's a possibility there. The next two slides, or the next couple of slides will go over the comparison of the 2014 data and the 2018 data. So this is the area of the city that the next slide covers. And you can see the community center where we are right now here, Philadelphia Avenue and Maple Avenue. So this is the LiDAR comparison of 2018 to 2014. This slide provides the 2018 LiDAR data. And so if you went back to the 2014 data, we would see, so the areas in green are gain, the areas in brown are loss, and the purple areas are no change. So you could see, you know, again, this is the community center over here. We can see that, you know, in, and we have also, one of the maps, we printed those, printed out, that I'll get to in a second, that shows kind of throughout the city the, the canopy in, you know, over those four years. But there's, there's multiple areas where there's been tree loss. Again, I want to emphasize that it's a lot easier to measure loss than it is to measure gain. Loss is pretty, you know, at one time, if a tree is removed, whereas a tree grows slowly.
What's the biggest reason for the loss?
I would, based on my experience with tree removal, permit applications is really just large trees declining. So, and I can show in one of the next slides that the largest kind of concentration of tree loss is in Ward 1 and Ward 3. And I think that's in part because the, that was probably the first area of the city that was developed. And so the trees that are planted in that area are the oldest trees and also the first one, you know, just like people, trees have a lifespan, that, that probably is the, one of the reasons. But I think it's also good to look at, are there pests that are more in a particular area? Is the proximity to DC where there is probably less forest, is that an influencing factor? Sometimes storms can do significant damage in a particular area. So there's, it's good to look at the data and kind of, we're trying to link it also to the data of the past four years, over the past four years, excuse me, with the tree removal permits that were issued to overlay these, those data on this slide to see if, and hopefully it matches. If it does not, then we have to kind of figure out what's going on. But I think that's very interesting to look at that and then to look at, you know, what some of the reasons are. But from my personal experience with tree removal permit applications is just the, the aging of the, the tree population in Tacoma Park.
And how about the effect of PEPCO?
I would say that's, that's, that's a minimal impact. So the, the biggest factor is, I think, the aging of the, the tree canopy. And particularly certain species are more prone to, you know, diseases and insights.
And so would you say that Ward 5's tree stock is stable?
Say it again, sorry.
Would you say that Ward 5's tree stock is stable? It's not going up, it's not going down, it's just-
Based on the canopy assessments that have been done, it is stable at this point. One of the things with the tree canopy assessment seminar that we did, that was held in, early this year, we looked, we did a SWOT analysis, what are some of the strengths, what are some of the weaknesses, what are some of the opportunities and what are some of the threats? And I think as we look further at a tree canopy goal and an implementation plan, I think that's a, a great opportunity to really zoom in and, and come up with particular strategies to, you know, to, to, to increase the canopy and also to make sure that what we have to maintain that, so.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. This is the map that we've printed out here too. This shows over the fast, past four years, the change in measured tree canopy citywide. And I think you can see over here, so it goes from yellow to red. Yellow and orange being areas that, where there is little to no tree canopy loss, to red where there is tree canopy loss. So I think this area, I kind of referred to that earlier, where there is significant, or quite a bit of tree loss in the past four years. And this is, you know, Ward 1 and Ward 3. And then there's an area bit over here. And then it's, for the rest, it's kind of evenly distributed. So I think once we overlay the data of the tree permits that were issued over the past four years, you know, that should kind of match up. And in my experience, it's primarily the aging of, of the existing forest.
If I can just ask really quickly, the, the tree permit applications, though, wouldn't show trees that have just fallen in storms, right?
Correct.
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah, and it also looked like the two areas that had the tallest trees were some in Ward 1 and Ward 3 and then along Sligo Creek. Those have fallen down last, so is there some sort of protective factor? Because they're low-lying and grouped together in a area as opposed to being scattered among yards and houses?
Sure, absolutely, yeah, very much so. So when trees are growing in a forest, I think the, the best way to see that probably if its development takes place in a forested area, a lot of trees are removed and then suddenly trees that have previously been, you know, in, inside the forest and protected are suddenly exposed. They're much more prone to, to failure, wind throw. The sun has much more impact on those trees. So it takes those trees quite some time to recover if they do, and quite often they don't. So yeah, absolutely, that's a good point. So this is the change in measured tree canopy by land use from 2014 to 2018. So this is the percentage and the positive change. So growth, this is in a negative direction. So yeah, there is growth. It is in the industrial area, which is very limited in the city, so this might be a couple of trees, so. But the biggest loss here again is in the medium-density residential area. And the next slide shows that also were change in measured tree canopy by land ownership from 2014 to 2018. This is in acres. So as I mentioned, the acreage of tree canopy on private property is approximately 550 acres. And over the past four years, we've lost about, I would say, 43 acres, what equates to 43 acres on private property in the city. So some, some key conclusions from the tree canopy assessment presentation and report. So that Tacoma Park has a robust urban forest. Compared to, you know, other cities like Bowie, Annapolis, Hyattsville, they have an urban tree canopy of approximately 40%. Greenbelt is the only other local community that has a similar tree canopy. I think, you know, parkland, both Greenbelt and Tacoma Park have quite a bit of parkland. But I think what this presentation and the key points here show more importantly is, is the large number of trees on private property, particularly medium-density residential. So a key strategy to move forward is to preserve the current tree canopy. It's much less expensive and more efficient to retain the existing tree canopy. So I think, so private property owners play a key role in maintaining and growing the city's urban forest. One other thing to, to point out is that, you know, continuing mapping, monitoring, and inventorying the city's urban forest is really helpful also to see trends, come up with, you know, a, a good implementation plan. And I think they are really helpful for that. So this concludes the first part of the presentation tonight. Are there any other questions on this first part?
Just want to point out that the LiDAR data only captures trees of a certain size. So if a tree was planted a couple of years ago and it's not already four feet tall, or it was a four or six, they won't show up, it didn't show up on this.
Correct, yeah, it's only up to a certain size. I think it started like eight, eight or 10 feet.
Oh, was it eight? Okay.
Yeah, that was also, to, to go back to one of the slides that shows the, actually I have to go back. This shows an area in green over here. This is behind the school, near the community center. And four years ago, that didn't show, the trees were already there, but they were not tall enough, so your point is all taken, yeah.
Let's go another question, sorry. So when you look at the, at the three measurements, it was 59%, then 62%, then 58%. So over 10 years, that seems pretty stable. But in five years, dropping from 62 to 58 is actually between 5 and 10%, right?
Right.
So is it really just fine because it's that way? Or are we potentially seeing a bigger decline now?
So based on my two cents, there's a lot of large trees that are in significant decline as I drive through the city. So that's why I think an implementation plan, careful, you know, to really use the data that we have, an implementation plan is really important. And based also on the SWOT analysis, what are the, the strengths and the weaknesses and the opportunities. But, you know, even today, I was out at a number of properties and I, I was kind of surprised by the large number of declining trees that was on Sycamore Avenue. So I, I think from that perspective, I wouldn't be surprised if that trend would continue. And that, you know, it's important to take steps to counter that. And, you know, the biggest opportunity again is on medium-density property, private property. So I think working with, with property owners, doing outreach, education, the value of maintaining trees, existing canopy is really important.
And Lars, I just, because I had the opportunity to go to the, the workshop and then afterwards the discussion, which I think was really good, and I'm glad we were able to get Noah here from the University of Vermont for that day. And I think this goes to the point that was made earlier in public comments. We, I just wanted to point out that during that conversation, we did talk about how this just measures size and what the, it doesn't measure species of trees. And so that was part of the conversation that day. And in the future, looking at how can we also like, figure out what species we have and other things. And I think that goes with some of the public comments we've heard. And last week, our former colleague, Councilmember Mail, was here also talking about the need to take into consideration climate change and what species of trees are going to be most resilient to changes in our climate and in this region. So anyway, I just wanted to let folks know that, that was something else that was part of our conversation that day.
Sure, yeah, yeah. I talked to somebody yesterday a bit about street tree, street tree inventory and also plot assessment. So those are some of the, so the assessment is a top-down and then a bottom-up inventory and assessment, so, yeah. So I'll switch to the next presentation. All right, so the next presentation is a, an overview of the tree permitting process in the City of Tacoma Park. The city's tree code, Title 12 Trees and Vegetation, has been enacted in 1983, has amended approximately 10 times since. The last time is in 2010 and 2011. The objectives of the title, Chapter 12 and 12 is to protect, preserve, and promote the city's urban forest, support a thriving urban forest for the many environmental, economic, health- support a thriving urban forest for the many environmental, economic, health and lifestyle benefits. And then also to protect healthy trees of desirable species and to protect the trees at every opportunity. So the city code, the tree ordinance applies only to urban, what's called an urban forest tree. So the first step would be to define what is an urban forest tree. It's a tree that's twenty-four inches in circumference, measured four and a half feet off the ground. And then that equates to seven five eighth of an inch in diameter. Sometimes people ask me, how did they come up with seven five eighth of an inch? Why not seven, you know, four eighth? So, but that's because of the, the twenty-four inches in circumference, that's the, the key factor. But it is also covered by an urban forest tree, trees that were required replanting through the city's tree code. And then also trees that were funded through a government program. So that's trees that can be trees of any size, that can be two-inch diameter tree or three inches. There's three types of tree permits, the tree removal permit, the tree impact assessment and the tree protection plan agreement that you're all familiar with.
Sure.
So the first, the tree removal permit is to remove an urban forest tree. Typically, I'll go out and do what's called a level two assessment. From the ground, basically, I use a rubber mallet, metal rod, and then also binoculars, et cetera, to evaluate the trees and then determine if a permit will be issued. And that's typically preliminary approval, or if a waiver will be required of the removal, the tree will be denied. The second tree-related application is the tree impact assessment. And there's kind of two categories that fall under that application. The first one is if people want to prune live branches of an urban forest tree, that up to five percent can be pruned. And deadwooding is, is obviously exempt from that, there's no permit requirement for that. We want people to prune, you know, dead wood from trees. But it's, this is just in place to make sure that people don't over-prune their trees. So five percent or more requires the, of the life canopy, requires the tree impact assessment. With the understanding that it doesn't mean that it can, one cannot prune more than five percent. It's just I meet typically on site with the property owner and the contractor, go over what can be pruned and then, you know, come to an agreement. And there might be reasons why more than five percent of the tree canopy needs to be removed. The second category that falls under this application are the, any land disturbing activities over twenty-five square feet in an area within fifty feet of an urban forest tree. Or, you know, construction work, again, within fifty feet of an urban forest tree or any activity that may destroy woods or endanger water supply of a tree. The assessment then, based on the assessment, it's, I make a determination if a tree protection plan is needed or not. And that brings then, leads me to the last category, the tree protection plan agreement. It's a detailed plan for protecting trees in the property during the, the, the activities described previously. The tree removal permit, so once an applicant submits an application, there's a fifty-dollar fee to receive by the Public Works Department. I perform an, as I mentioned, a level two inspection. And it's based on the criteria in the city code that I will go over in the, in the second, it's in section twelve, twelve hundred and twenty. As I mentioned, there's three, three possible outcomes. So a waiver is typically issued when a tree is dead or when it's, you know, hazardous, so unsafe and kind of an immediate threat. One note, there is also that I do also from time to time issue emergency waivers. So if a, if a tree is an imminent threat to people or property, then I can give, I usually have them with me in my vehicle. I can issue an emergency waiver on the spot so that people can immediately move forward. But that's for trees that are an imminent hazard, so we want those removed as soon as possible. The next category is the preliminary approval of a tree removal request. The applicant is notified by mail and is informed of the replanting requirement. So there's a fifteen-day comment period and then also the, the replanting requirement. During that fifteen-day comment period, any resident in the city or any property owner in the city can appeal the preliminary approval. And that appeal would be heard by the tree commission. So a hearing would be scheduled and then the commission makes a decision. So then, once the permit is issued, once the city receives the signed replanting agreement or the payment of a fee and, you know, after the fifteen-day comment period. The, the last option is the denial of, of a request. So typically, if trees are healthy and there's no extenuating circumstance, why a tree should be removed. And typically, a tree permit removal application is, is denied. Each applicant has the right within fifteen days to appeal my decision and request a hearing for the tree commission. So these are the criteria for the tree removal evaluation that I use. These are also used by the tree commission during.
Could I ask a question about the previous slide? I'm sorry. So it, the one option is a waiver is issued. But if the waiver is not issued, then the, the applicant's option is then to submit a regular permit request? Is that, is that the idea? If, if you say, no, I won't give you a waiver, can they submit a ordinary permit application to have the tree removed?
Well, so we have one application, the tree removal application. And so I don't necessarily, so if a tree is dead, I'll issue a waiver. So if a tree needs to be removed and I agree that it needs to be removed, then I'll, it will be preliminary approval. So it, if a, if a person, so I don't necessarily make, make the distinction that way, if that makes sense.
Just, I think these are in response to a permit application, all three options. So the waiver is in response to a permit application, unless you see an imminent danger or something.
Yeah, exactly, then, then I will issue a, an emergency waiver. But so I just, there's one application and I look at all three options when I, I go out.
But the decision not to grant a waiver, but to have the person have to go through, the, the, the waiver itself is not appealable, is that right?
Correct, that's correct. Yeah, I'll get to that in the presentation in a little bit, but that's correct, yeah. So the preliminary approval is appealable by any resident or any property owner. And then the denial of a request is also appealable. So these are the criteria for tree removal evaluation, these are in the city code. You know, key factor is obviously the tree health. Other key factor is how does the, the tree fit in the overall urban forest? Is it a desirable species or not? There is a category in the, the city code for undesirable species that can always be removed and there's, have the, the normal replanting requirement. The other, some of the other criteria pertain to development. And the, you know, is there a hardship by denying the removal of a tree? Also, from my perspective, what I look, are there, when it pertains to development, are there reasonable alternatives? So if, if someone wants to remove a, a tree for, let's say, an addition or a new home, can the house be sited in such a way or the addition sited in such a way that the tree can be preserved? So that's a key factor in, in that.
So can I just ask a quick question? What happens if you buy a house? Your insurance company says, this tree is too close to this house. We're afraid that either a limb's going to fall down or the tree itself might fall down and damage this house. We will not insure your house until you do something about this tree.
So the first thing I would probably do is to request the information from the insurance company letter stating the information. I, I think the next step would be a site visit to, to kind of do an evaluation of the tree and see what the issue is. You know, if the tree is not healthy and it needs to be removed, then it's, it's a simple case.
But what if it's not obvious? What if you look at it and you think, oh, looks okay? But the insurance company will not give you a binder for that house?
Sure, yeah. So one option there, sometimes what I recommend is to do a level three assessment. So my evaluation is, as I said, it's, it's called a level two. So you have a level one assessment, that's basically you drive in a car, you drive by and take a quick look at trees that way. A level two assessment is what I do. A level three assessment might be that somebody climbs up in the tree, a tree contractor. Or there, the use of a resistograph is sometimes used where it drills into the tree, it graphs on a piece of paper the amount of, of resistance the drill bit encounters and in that way determining how much solid wood there is. So that would be another, other option, you know, to determine if there's any question about it, to make sure that the tree, you know, that there's no issue. One other option then would be with that information is to maybe go back to the insurance company and say, here's, here's the data that show that the tree is, is safe. So, so there is a process, I do take that into consideration. I don't really recall having that situation come up, but if, if it does, then I think there's a way to, to work through that.
You know, I don't want to continue to talk about this specific example, but on Kennebec Avenue, Kennebec and Maple.
Right, sure.
You had some interaction with the owners of that house and.
Correct.
And, you know, the insurance company initially said that they wanted the tree down and then eventually they did cut the tree down and the core of the tree was rotten. So now they're trying to get back some money that they had to pay.
Right.
So, you know, in a situation like that, you don't obviously know that there's a problem with the tree. You know, I think there are more examples of that happening in, in the city. People just throw up their hands and they don't want to deal with it. It would be nice if we had some type of mechanism where we could, you know, make sure that when situations like that do come up, people can take down these trees. I mean, I don't think they, the family wanted to do it, you know? I mean, it was just, they were just put in a situation that they didn't have any options.
No, no, that's why I also approved that, it was a preliminary approval. But I, I agreed that that was a large beet tree that was grown into the roof. So I think it would have been unreasonable to deny that permit application. At the same time, the, the way the code is currently, that would have been, was a preliminary approval with a fifteen-day comment period and then also a replanting requirement. And I know that, that is, was in this case, a significant sum of money for, for the individual. And I, I can certainly understand that that's, on top of the removal cost, that that was a very significant dollar amount. So the way the, the code is currently, it would fall, it falls into that category, so. But yeah, that, you know, I did, there's limitations also to the level two assessment. I did a pretty thorough level two assessment. From my perspective, what I saw was that the tree was in, in definitely fair, fair to good condition. So, but that's why there is a level three assessment. That can, you know, from time to time, I recommend that a property owner do a level three assessment.
How much does a level three assessment cost?
It's a bit on a case-by-case basis for, so for the use of a resistograph, that's typically done at the base of the tree where there's different, different locations. The, the resistograph is used to, to measure the amount of solid wood or decayed wood. With a report, it typically goes with a report, goes with that. I would say probably between six to eight hundred dollars, depending a bit on the situation, depending on the tree. So, and then there's a number of, of people that do that, so the price might vary a little bit there as well.
Okay.
So and then the other level three assessment, there's, there's a variety of things that can be done. As I said, sometimes a climber or a tree company will climb up in a tree. There's sometimes things that are not visible from the ground. Sometimes what I recommend that people do is that they, you know, get an estimate that if the tree needs to be removed, that the, the expense for the climber or for the resistograph be waived if they, if they can negotiate with the contractor. So that it's not an additional cost for the, the property owner.
Okay.
And Councilman Kostic has a question?
Yeah, I had an unrelated question. In regards to number one here and a proposed development, if there is no way to do the addition or build the house without removing a tree, do you then approve that regardless? Or are there cases where you'll say, no, you just absolutely cannot make that addition to your house? Or you cannot build a house here?
So I think a key factor, and we're kind of jumping ahead a little bit, but so there's the tree impact assessment application. I think the ideal would be, and what it's intended is to submit that early on in the design phase. So then we can go over the design and then we can avoid the design tree preservation conflict issues or tree removal issues. So the, that's what it was designed for, from my perspective, the tree impact assessment, to meet early on and go over what are the options. So there's trees over here. And I think there, there needs to be some flexibility on, on everybody involved in that process. If, you know, people want to do a certain addition, then, you know, there's, I think there needs to be a certain flexibility. If there are some smaller trees that might be in, in the way of the addition that can be removed, but at the same time preserve some of the larger canopy trees, I think that's a bit of a trade-off. And I think it's a bit on a case-by-case basis. That's, that's at least my perspective and what I, I've been kind of doing. So, but again, that's, it's important to take that step early on and then to kind of see what the, the possibilities are. Sometimes it might be that some exploratory air spading be done to kind of see where the roots of a tree are, particularly larger trees. To see, for example, if a footer is placed somewhere. There's also different design options, sometimes having a full foundation or versus a pair and beam foundation. So there's kind of a lot of different, different options that it's kind of important to, to work through those.
If I could speak to that also, it, it's one thing if you've just got a house lot and you want to build a house or build an addition, that kind of discussion goes on. It's sometimes different in a historic district, that may come into play as well. Where we've seen some interesting things is when there was a property that is fairly, fairly good size and the owner wanted to divide it into three properties and build three houses. And because of the heavy tree canopy and the, and the placement of the trees, it had to go through a subdivision process and it was only approved for two, two lots. So that, and only two houses were able to be built. So if it was just a flat piece of land that was without any of these trees, he would have been approved for the three. But sometimes there's those kind of discussions when there's a subjective kind of discretionary approval that's involved in the review of a development. So, so he's correct about something that's, that's a fairly simple thing, but on larger projects, there's different other aspects where someone may not get all that they want.
You're talking about approved by the county?
Yes, but the city council in that particular case weighed in very strongly through your comments to the planning board.
Okay.
The, the other thing I want to note also, the, in the city code pertaining to trees, there's also, when people buy a property, there's also language that's included, that's given to the property owner, kind of outlining what the tree code is and that it may restrict also some of the things that can be done on the property. I think it's always, you know, good to work with, with someone to, to see what the possibilities are. But it's unfortunate that sometimes it happens later on in the process when people might already have a design or a, a building permit and then it becomes more difficult. So a key is really that it takes place early on in the design phase of, of a project.
Can I just ask, these, these criteria are not in the ordinance?
They are.
They are in the ordinance. Thank you.
Yeah, they're, and these are the same criteria that the tree commission uses during appeal here.
How, how often would you say, on say, number one, criteria on number one, that someone just is unable to go forward with a planned addition or, or renovation? Generally, if they're willing to pay the replacement cost, are they able to do it? Or is, are there some cases where you just say, I don't know, that's a really special tree, it's a.
Yeah, I think it's, it's a bit, and, and that's the. Yeah, I think it's, it's a bit, and, and that's the, the whole issue with tree preservation in general. It's, it's very much on a case by case basis. Uh, I was just out on the property the other day where there's a large tulip poplar. There's, uh, houses on either side, it's a very restricted root space. So, in a case like that, it's, there's not a whole lot of flexibility. Uh, lucky enough, the, the architect got, uh, got me involved and another arborist involved early on in the process. So, I think we'll be able to come up with, with, you know, a plan that, that works for the property owner and it works also for, from a tree preservation perspective. So, I think it is a bit on the case by case basis. I think it is there, there, it's important that there be, uh, some flexibility on both sides to, to work. Uh, in some cases, it, it might mean that if, if there's a large tree in the way. My experience typically has been that there, that there are other options, but there, yeah.
I, Councilman Siriessi has a question.
So, one question I have is about, um, the second criteria. Um, do you take into account the lot size, um, when determining the number and type of replacement trees? Um, I know a lot of people are dealing with not large lots and yet they may have acquired a pretty, you know, large, single, large tree.
Sure.
That, um, if taken down would require replacement trees of like eight oaks, which over time would bury your house alive.
Right.
So, do, do you not take into account at all whether or not, um, the, I, I know that we're basing the replacement count on the actual size of the, of the mature, the diameter of the tree, but are you taking to account like the actual ability of a person to be able to plant the replacement trees on their property? Or are we working under the assumption that you just are paying a, a fee and will have to actually plant the trees somewhere else or donate them?
Yeah, so, uh, first of all, the, the replanting criteria are based on the health of the tree and the diameter. It's a combination of factors and, um, as it pertains to the lot size, so the, um, that is not taken into account with the replanting requirement currently as it's in the city code. So, it's strictly the, the size of the tree, the health of the tree and based on, uh, I'd evaluate a tree and then based on that rating that determines, I gave it a health rating also, then, uh, it's, it's, uh, a, there's a replanting, a certain replanting requirement now. And that's, I think, one of the reasons why there's the fee and lieu option is to, because a lot of people, it's hard to plant trees on their property because they might not, the lot might be fairly small or they might have, already have a lot of other trees. The other thing is that people can do a combination of tree planting or fee and lieu. What some people have done is ask some of their neighbors if they can plant a tree on their property. Uh, so, there are a few options, but that's, uh, so, the, the lot size of, uh, the lot where the tree is gonna be removed is not taken to, to account.
And we don't take into account, and you just mentioned other trees that that property owner may already have on their lot. So, if someone, um, again, I'm making this up. If you feel like you've done your fair share, you have a number of very large mature trees on your quarter acre lot. I'm sorry, I'm a southern girl and I've been taught you do not plant a bunch of large oak trees next to your house when you don't have a lot, you don't have acreage for it. Um, so, you're not taking into account the other trees that are there. You're only taking in acca- into account the tree that is the health and the diameter of the tree. So, I guess for me, from a policy perspective, I'm often thinking about the prior presentation. So, how do you incentivize planting trees on private property of homeowners? When it could potentially be viewed as a burden? You know, like if my neighbor has no trees and I have all of the trees and I have a problem with the tree and I gotta plant ten more and pay for them, what incentive does my neighbor have other than just the goodwill of wanting to do their part to plant a tree? Um, I think that's, that's the balance that, that we're gonna have to think about as we're starting to talk through this.
Sure.
Um, I'm sorry, I got my survey results and I'm looking at everyone saying these, planting is too high, it's too much. Um, so, it, that's something that we will need to, you know, I know I'm kinda jumping ahead, but that's something that we're gonna definitely have to take into consideration because.
So, one of the, the reasons why we have the, the replanting requirement in place is that the idea is that, uh, through the replanting requirement, the, the canopy that's lost is gonna grow back in twenty-five years. So, either through, uh, the property owner replanting trees, uh, or, uh, the city replanting trees. So, the idea is that within twenty-five years, that canopy that was lost through the trees that are planted, that canopy is gained and then eventually, you know, overtakes that. So, that's the, the rationale behind the, the current replanting requirement. So, I think, you know, that's an interesting discussion to have to, to see is there, you know, if that's the objective, are there other ways to reach that objective? So, so that's, yeah.
I just, so, just to piggyback on just that point, 'cause I think it's just something, I know we're not getting deep in it, but I really think rethinking this is gonna be important as we move forward the discussion. 'Cause if we're talking about the tree canopy as a public good that we all benefit from, if you're thinking about the individual homeowner who happens to have trees have, as you said, a lifespan like people do. And so, if you're an individual homeowner who has these, has a tree that there's these other costs involved. And so, I just wanna think, you know, about how we're looking at the replacement. Is it all the burden on the person who lost the tree or is there, because this is a public good overall? Um, the other thing, a question I have, where, where, where does this live, the criteria for tree, the tree removal evaluation?
Uh, I can look it up for you.
Is it in the, it's in the, it's in the ordinance?
It's in the, it's in the code.
Yeah. Yeah, well, I think that's, I mean, the ordinance is confusing, that's why we're doing this too. There's a reason for the madness. Um, so, all right, I just, it was like, because I think that's what I also hear a lot from folks. Um, you know, is not an understanding of criteria or purpose and so, um.
It's section twelve, twelve, one twenty. And it's criteria for tree permit decisions and as I said, that's both for the, the ones that I use in making a determination and then also if an appeal goes to the tree commission, those are the criteria that they use as well.
So, it's in there, so?
Yeah, it's there. Um, I mean, I, 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 but again, that code is, it's hard. I'm a smart girl, I read a lot of law. That one is hard to understand, it really is. Um, one thing that I do think might be important and kinda looking at my colleagues, you know, we tend to, um, enforce through penalties and not necessarily through like the necessary carrots, right? Um, we might want to think about giving people credits for having trees already on their property. So, if you have a tree that is at the end of its life and you have to take it out, um, and maybe when we're thinking about different options, taking into account the number of mature trees this particular property owner already has on their property and giving them credit against the replacement tree number for that um, might actually help people. Um, and then do what it is that, you know, 'cause I, I, I'm, I'm, I've lived it. It is a very, very frustrating process to be in when you are having, facing damage to your home. The example that, um, Councilmember Smith mentioned, I've had residents have had trees that they could not remove ultimately fall on their house and it's like, okay, now, do I have to plant twenty oak trees now? I mean, I don't have a home anymore. Um, so, if there are things that we can do to try to encourage people um, to view our stance on, um, improving or increasing the tree canopy, that it's not just about increasing the canopy, no matter if it's gonna put you in the poorhouse, but it's also ensuring that we have a healthy tree canopy and how do we create the right incentives for people to want to actually plant trees without viewing it as overly burdensome or if twenty-five years from now, um, that tree falls, they're now gonna have to live in a forest because they're gonna have to plant twenty-five trees to replace it.
One of the, um, things that was suggested or mentioned that could be considered when, uh, you vote to change the way that we do stormwater fees, um, was to give credit for trees. Uh, as part of the way to, because that also offsets some things. How that exactly is done would have to be determined, but, um, that, you know, there may be a place where you can get some kind of a benefit, annual benef- financial benefit from having those, you know, in conjunction with not having a lot of, um, impervious surface. So, um, that doesn't really go to this, but it, it's something that, when we talked about stormwater, we were talking about how so many of the different things that you're considering over this next year might interrelate. And so, there may be some ways, in a different way, that it also benefits us.
I, I would say also, just so people know about it, if you do plant a tree on your property, you can, I'm looking at the head of public work, you can basically pay it forward.
Right.
Like you can, as long as you do the proper paperwork and then if you have to take down a tree in the future, you, that can be used as credit towards the replacement tree.
But, but if I can just, but, but when we talk race equity, knowing to pay, fill out the paperwork and pay it forward, I mean, it's, that is an area where most people aren't gonna be paying attention. So, the more that we can make it easy for people to, the better.
The one, the one other thing I would just point out is of these nine criteria, so they're not in order of importance, they're all equal and every one is subjective and each decision can be based on one or two or seven or all nine of these in various interwoven ways and that's what the law says, so it's not improper to do that. But I think this is one of the pieces that makes it hard for people because a- as you said, it, it's a case by case basis. Um, I don't know whether it's possible to make it, uh, more quantified, but when people see that, well, it's this specific number of this many, this much circumference and this is the, uh, the diameter at this height and this is how many need to be replaced, that all seems very, very specific. And this, which may be fair in its own way, I don't know, is the opposite, right? It's not a criticism, you're, that's the law, but you could decide in one case, well, number one is really the most important thing, so I'm gonna let them do it. Or you might say, well, you know, it's, uh, the number four, I'm not gonna let anybody cut it down. And so, how do you even decide which of those things is more important in any given case? It's, you're using your judgment, right? That's a frustration, I think, for people. That's what we need to think about. I, I don't have an answer to that, but I think that's, that's the complication here. These are all valid things to consider.
Councilman Kostic?
Yeah, one thing I wanted to point out also is that when I, uh, do an evaluation of a tree, uh, you know, obviously I look at the tree health, but, uh, in risk assessment in, uh, urban forestry and, and forestry in general, a, a vital part is also the, uh, the, the impact of a tree. If a tree were to fail or a limb were to fail, so safety of people and property is, is vital in that if a tree falls in a forest, um, you know, then typically there's, there's no impact. But if there, if it's near homes, roads and so forth, so that's a critical factor in, in the assessment of a tree removal application.
Um, regarding the way that we communicate about the tree ordinance, I think we've, it's been touched on a couple of times tonight. One thing I hear from people frequently is that they do feel like it is punitive and they feel like they are environmentalists, they really care about trees, they don't wanna remove their trees, but they have to because of X, Y, and Z. And it feels to them like they're being almost told that they're sort of a bad person or they're, um, you know, they're doing something to harm the environment. And many times I think people feel that really strongly because they might actually be really strong proponents of environmental action. And so, I, I think some of that, some of that goes to amending the ordinance, but some of that also just goes to how it's communicated, I think, in terms of how we're framing the importance of the tree canopy and why this exists in the first place and the overall community benefit. Um, and then I also think, a couple of slides ago, you talked about the waiver um, and the fact that the waiver could be for a dead or hazardous tree. And the hazardous part is, the definition of that is what is very confusing because people feel that their tree is hazardous if it's over their house or, you know, it's, it's leaning close to their ch- child's bedroom. Um, and, you know, it, it isn't a lot of solace if, if you're told, well, the tree's, okay, I've done an assessment of it. Uh, you know, it's not gonna fall, but I, I mean, people feel real fear, especially if someone else had a tree fall in their house in the neighborhood. So, that, defining what that hazardous is, if, if it's a tree, I think one of the things we've talked about and kind of brainstorming is if it's a tree that is dying and it's anticipated to die within the next five years, having to wait for it to die is, you know, rather than being able to take it down before it potentially falls, it, those sorts of things, I think, are real concerns for people.
Yeah, I, I, I can certainly appreciate that. Um, I think, uh, from my perspective, I, I do, uh, you know, thorough evaluation. I take that serious as a, as a licensed professional and, and also the fact that I don't wanna have that on, on my conscience that I could have done something. Um, I do also have to say that there, uh, there is a certain risk to trees, period, even healthy trees. So, sometimes, as I had mentioned previously, I also recommend that people, uh, do a, a, a level three assessment. Um, so, um, I have to also say that my perspective, that, you know, I've been with the city for about two and a half years. Uh, it took me a while to, to grasp the ordinance as well, uh, just like it is for residents and, and I think my perspective has evolved a bit as well, also in working with the tree commission. So, I think from that perspective, um, you know, I'm, I'm learning too from that perspective. But I, um, I think also, um, you know, that's why I wrote an article, uh, for the March newsletter. A regular tree inspections, uh, by a licensed professional is really critical. I, I would say that eighty to ninety percent of limb failure or tree failure can be prevented with proper maintenance. Uh, I think that's an i- issue that, you know, I've talked with the tree commission also about the, the outreach and education part is really vital. Um, that, uh, property owners understand that just as they need to maintain their, their furnace, um, you know, their heating, cooling systems, their roof, et cetera, that trees are a vital part of that as well. And it's, I think, I can understand that that's not a priority for people quite often. Uh, there's other pressing things maybe and, and also, uh, tree work can be quite expensive as well, so I can certainly appreciate that. But I think that's, there's an area where, uh, I think more outreach and education can be done also.
Hazardous is not. Hazardous is not defined in the.
It says in, so in chapter twelve oh four, the general provisions, hazardous is defined in, in relation to a tree or tree part means defective, diseased or dead, imposing an unreasonable risk of failure or fracture with the potential to cause injury to people or damage to property. That's as it's defined in the, the city code currently.
Okay, thank you.
So, I think a, a key part with hazardous is also, is it possible to address the issue with tree pruning? Uh, if a tree has dead limbs, um, you know, it's not, and, and, you know, abnormal for, uh, any tree to have some dead limbs and, you know, can it be addressed through pruning? Or is it really, uh, a structural defect that there is no way? For example, I looked at a tree today that had significant decay at the base of the tree. That's not, that's structural, that's not possible to address that through pruning or, or what have you. So, those are also two different, um, two different things as well.
I also wanted to just note that in our housing discussions, we talk about the cost of trees and that that is tree maintenance and that that needs to be figured in when we talk about what, what the, you know, kind of the cost to a resident and, and how we figure out any subsidies or other kind of assistance.
All right, can I suggest that we continue since giving, getting kind of late?
Yeah.
We get through this part.
Uh, so, the, uh, replanting requirement calculations, that's, uh, city code section twelve, twelve, uh, one hundred. Um, using the, the criteria in the code and I'll go over those in the next page. Um, so, replacement trees need to be, uh, uh, an inch and a half in diameter and it's typically measured six inches of the ground and an evergreen has to be at least six, uh, feet in height when planted. And again, the, the intent is to replace the, the existing tree canopy, uh, from the removed tree within twenty-five years. And then, as I mentioned previously, the undesirable species, it can always be removed and it's half the normal, uh, replanting requirement. Uh, so, this is when I go out, uh, when I receive a tree removal application and I visit a property, these are the criteria that I use. Um, there's six criteria, so the trunk and the root system, I evaluate those. And it might sound pretty simple, I usually use a rubber mallet and it's a pretty effective tool actually to discover, um, uh, decay uh, in, at the base of a tree. in, at the base of a tree, use metal rod also to probe. Insect and diseases, annual growth rate, the crown development, the structure and the life expectancy, those are the criteria that I use for the evaluation. And then there's a, sorry, there's a rating, each criteria is, has a value of one to five, and then there's a score. So six to fifteen is a one percent canopy replacement, and that equates to a tree being in poor condition. Sixteen to twenty-four is two percent canopy replacement, that equates to a tree being in fair condition. And twenty-five to thirty is a three percent canopy replacement and then equates to a tree being in good condition.
So yeah, I, I know I just said I wasn't gonna interrupt you again, but so, I'm gonna break that rule. So is this assessment passed on then to residents when, so they have this? So they know, like, after they've asked you, like, you said you went out today to look at some trees and assess them? So they know what, do you give them the score?
So the, the scores, so I give them the rating of the, the trees in poor condition, fair or good. I, traditionally, typically I, we do not provide the, the actual rating criteria. If people ask, they, we provide those, but typically at this point, they're, they're not included. But the overall rating, so the, the result of the, the score, the overall score, that information is provided.
Is there a reason not to provide them, the act, I'm just going on what we, we hear from residents, they feel this, this is a very subjective process. And there's, there's a lot that, you know, and so, and to hear it's a rating of a fair, poor, or whatever, still sounds subjective. And I'm not sure how many folks know when they're getting their, that when you're evaluating their trees, there's this criteria and you actually come up with a number.
Right.
It seems much more objective as you're describing it here than I think people are experiencing it.
Yeah, it, it, at all, this is all in the city code also, but, you know, then the question is how often do people look at the city code? I know.
Well, you know, I think that on this, I think we can look at giving this information because it's really helpful to people to recognize that even if they're, have a poor health tree, that there still is this computation that is a one percent canopy replacement that still equates to a certain amount replanting requirement. They can, they can hear, oh my God, it could have been, you know, this much more high, hi, much higher?
Right.
You know, I didn't, and they usually feel better when they find that out, frankly. So, you know, that's something that we can investigate about, an easy way to do that.
So this is the sheet that I use for the, these are the criteria. And this is the, an actual sheet that I use that has on, one side it has the inch diameter of the tree and this has the rating, so it's the one percent, two percent, three percent. And then I use that table to come up with the replanting requirement. So I also, from a professional perspective, I think it's important to be fair to, to anyone. So I, I go by the facts of, of what I find with the tree and let that drive the, you know, regardless of where I am or.
Yeah, no, I'm not, I'm, I don't mean any of this to sound like I'm questioning
Yeah.
your professionalism, what you're doing.
Sure.
It's all impress, it's, it's how people are feeling about the process, so.
I think it's also important to keep in mind that when you are charging people an application fee, they expect something in return. So if you charge fifty dollar application fee and all I get back is a no, your tree is fair, I'm sorry, I just paid fifty bucks for what? So, so I think if there is an ability, when we're talking about charging an application fee, that people do get some level of assessment that will better, or more detail about the assessment, that would help them to better make decisions about the next steps they need to take in order to, to deal with the tree. Because if I just see a fair or a poor, if I just see it's okay and I have another company here telling me it's not okay, I, I don't know what to do with that, you know? If you have another tree company that's on your property saying, ugh, you, you, you need to take care of this and I have, I've paid fifty dollars and I have this assessment saying it's okay, what am I supposed to do? So I could see having a little bit more detail in those assessments being helpful.
Yeah, if I could just enter one, one thing though, the fifty dollars is not for like an assessment just to give an opinion about a tree. It's, it's an action. And so I, I, I appreciate the need to see something, but I also, there is a general belief in Tacoma Park that our staff will go out and just give you an assessment of your tree and give you advice and that kind of thing. And that's not the op, that is not a service we provide. And it, it may be something that we may want to provide in the future with more money, but it's, it is something that, that comes up a lot.
I guess, I don't mean to speak for Felicia, but since this calculation has to be made anyway, why not just share it with people?
Yeah, I, we can, I think we, sorry, you wanna?
No, I just wonder if, you showed two sheets there that you use for the scoring. I just thought it might be helpful if we got a copy of those just to take.
Sure, sure. The first sheet is in the city code, and, but definitely, yeah, we could absolutely do that. It's, so most of, yeah.
All right, now we really will let you finish and we won't interrupt, I promise.
I doubt it.
Now it's quarter to eleven, yes.
I just, I just wanted to say, you know, and I get those questions a lot, can you evaluate my tree? And that's, that I always refer people to tree companies. The other thing I want to say to that point, if I know that somebody has evaluated, had a tree evaluated by a tree company, I typically touch base with that person. So I know most of the arborists at the tree companies that operate in Tacoma Park. So I think to do my due diligence, I typically touch base with people if I'm aware. So that's an important, and the other thing is, and I talked with one woman today where I provided some additional information in, in the letter, I, I might, if I have an email address of a person, I'll email the person. So in this particular case, there was ivy growing on the tree, so I, I asked that the person, you know, that, or recommended that that be removed and that some pruning be done. So I regularly touch base with people also to provide that information to them. So, yeah. The appeal process, so that's in city code section twelve, twelve, ten. So there's a certain number of things, and we touched upon that early, that can be appealed and certain things that cannot be appealed. Preliminary tree removal approval can be appealed by any resident or property owner in the city within the fifteen day posting period. As mentioned previously, the denial of a tree removal, a permit can be appealed by the applicant. Over the past, particularly in the first year and a half, there were, we, quite a few of my decisions got appealed to the tree commission. And then the preliminary tree protection plan approval within the fifteen day posting period can be appealed as well by dejoining property owner, or property owners. The things that cannot be appealed, the number of trees required for replanting, the decision by the urban forest manager that a tree requires a permit versus a waiver, and then the waiver decision. As mentioned, the tree commission considers the same nine criteria that I use for the decision making. More on the appeal process, it's, the tree commission meets, it's a quasi judicial nature, the city attorney is present. The burden of proof is on the appellant. What I typically do, I email the appellant the section of the city code and then highlight that part of the, the burden of proof and, and kind of go over that typically with, with the person so that they understand that there needs to be additional information that shows that my decision was, was incorrect. Then at the meeting, typically I present first the, the evaluation of the tree, the information that I have. Then the app, appellant provides their information. Then there's typically a question and answer, Q and A session, part of the, the meeting. Then everybody but the commissioners and the city attorney leave the room and then deliberation takes place. And then within thirty days of the hearing, the city attorney communicates the decision by the commission to all parties involved. If a appellant has the right to take it to circuit court, and it must be done within thirty days of issuance of the tree commission's decision. The tree impact assessment, again, you know, these are the criteria that are spelled out when assessment is needed. And I guess the key part, the key issue is really when that's submitted. And, and a key point is that it's submitted early on in the design phase of a project. So, and again, it pertains to pruning of trees, five percent or more, and then land disturbing activities. So the, the first one is typically when people, you know, regrade a property, it may be for an addition, it may be for landscaping purposes. The second one, activity in the critical root zone, that might be, very well be plumbing work if someone needs to install new sewer line or water line. The third one, a structural addition or new building that can significantly impact a tree. And then paving more than twenty-five square feet with an, with an impervious surface, so patio or what have you. The application fee is fifty dollars. A typically sketch or plan or brief narrative needs to be included so that I can have some idea of what the proposed project is. For more complicated projects, a site meeting with the contractor may be required to discuss the intended activity. The process that I have in place currently is that when someone submits a tree impact assessment application, I contact the applicant and meet on site with the person, go over the project and then, you know, review tree preservation measures. Typically, if it's a fairly simple project, there may not be a requirement for a tree protection plan. So I go over some tree preservation measures that may be required. Quite often you spray paint to lay out the location, take a picture of that, include that with the letter that's sent to the applicant. In the case that a, a tree protection plan is needed, I've started to always bring a copy of the tree protection plan, go over that with the, the applicant so that they understand the tree protection plan. We've had difficulties in people missing certain parts of it or not signing areas. So to go over everything that, that people understand the document and also then go over the required tree protection measures. And then if it gets more, if it's, the project is more involved, then the applicant, the property owner may need to have an arborist consultant in, involved in the process, in the project, in the process to prepare a tree protection plan. So I review tree protection plans, I don't prepare them. I think that's another point of confusion sometimes for, for, for residents, it has come up a number of times. Through the tree impact assessment process, I explain the process and I assist, but I do not prepare the, the actual plan. Then the applicant is also notified by letter that a tree protection plan will be required. What I typically also do is follow up with an email to kind of outline the different steps that need to be taken or that need to be included in the tree protection plan. The tree protection plan process, it's fifty dollars, it's a hundred dollars total. So if a tree impact assessment has been completed, then it's an additional fifty dollars. Submittal requires a detailed site plan drawn and completion of, of the application. And, you know, included in, in the plan needs to be, typically what I recommend that people take a plot of their property that shows the building and show where the trees are, where the proposed work is gonna take place, et cetera. A key point quite often is to also meet with the contractor on site. From time to time, I do that already in the tree impact assessment phase so that I can discuss with the contractor, where are you gonna store your materials? What is your access route going to be? How much space do you need to construct this? So to make sure that the, the plan that's developed is workable for the contractor, that you don't have a tree protection plan where a contractor says, I can't build this. So that's a really important step, oftentimes as well, to work closely with the contractor. Once the, so the, the, the next step is then I receive, we receive the, the tree protection plan. I approve it, there's a preliminary approval, and then after that, the, the letters are sent out to the adjacent property owners for a fifteen day comment period. If there are no comments or objections, then the permit is issued after those fifteen days. If there are comments or objections by adjacent property owners, then I try to resolve those issues with the applicant and the, the resident, the property owner in question and see if we can come to a resolution. If that does not work, then there's the option for the adjacent property owner to go to the tree commission and have an appeal hearing. That has only happened one time in my two and a half years with the city of Tacoma Park. The components of a tree protection plan, one thing with tree preservation, in my experience, it's, it's very site specific. There's no one size fits all approach because of the, the many buildings, et cetera, et cetera. So the first step is to determine if the location of the trees and the health of the tree, that's critical as well. I think in order to preserve a tree, a tree needs to be, you know, in decent or good condition. So then, then the next step is the identification of the critical root zones. The use of tree protection fencing, typically what I'd like to see is to block areas off on the site so that it's clear for the contractor not, not to go in certain areas, it works best. Particularly since there's typically on construction sites, a lot of different contractors. So one, the general contractor might know to stay out of an area, but the, the subcontractors might not know. So the simplest way is to just make it clear. The type of equipment to be used on the site is, is important as well. And that's also related to the type of tree protection fencing. If it's a really simple project, orange place fencing can be used. If it gets a bit more involved, I'd like to see wallet wire fencing. And if heavy equipment is involved, I typically like to see chain link fencing. And my experience is if that's not done, it just gets knocked down all the time or in the case, orange place fencing a tear. So it's important to have the different types of fencing on different sites. Other key issue.
I'm sorry, real quick question. Do we have, I'm, because I've heard that there may be some, that's like chain link and it's extra cost and might be a little overkill. Have we ever looked at or have some rough estimates of the full cost to a homeowner? Given various use cases, let's say you're building a deck from start to finish, what would be a potential cost impact to a homeowner for building a, a, a deck or fence? Because what I'm seeing in the presentation are dollar signs spread out across the process. And if you're talking about a tree removal on top of that, I'm, I could just see lots of money. So have we, have we, have we done that at all or, or no? Have we ever done, like, looking at some of the places where people would likely have to pay a lot of money and get a feel on average, how much are they spending for things like these fences and, and things like that?
I don't know that we have any averages because of properties and projects vary so much.
Yeah, it's so individual. I mean, I guess in general, you can anticipate that you'll have to spend from several hundred dollars to several thousand dollars for a tree protection plan. But the other thing you need to balance that is, is if you damage that tree, you're looking at thousands of dollars for removal and potential harm to your family or your home. So what we're trying to do is avoid trees from becoming injured or diseased or having to be removed. And that cost is, is largely, you know, will far exceed the tree protection measures.
So, so part of this really comes to one of the things that has been mentioned a couple of times, which is the, the tree assessment upfront. Because when you have that very first early, early discussion before the plans are drawn and whatever, then you get the information about what might be involved. Then the architect can tell the homeowner, you know, it's gonna cost XXX, Y, Z, you know, for, for this kind of work and you can be prepared for it as opposed to every time, you know, two months later, oh, I gotta now pay for chain link fence. So, so part of this is to have those early discussions so you know the, the costs of it.
The other thing, if it's not done early on, it, it might also drive up the cost significantly because then you're in a situation where the plan, you know, might, in addition, might be too close to a tree and then you have to do some acrobatics to try to save that tree. But I think the key point that Darrell made is really, you know, the, there's a reason that this is dumb, that, you know, the, the objective is to preserve the existing trees, they don't become hazardous for, for people. It was a, a property that I'd been dealing with for, for quite some time and it was related to, to Washington Gas that they did some work. And there was an, an agreement. Washington Gas that they did some work, and there was an agreement drafted for the, some inspections on the tree and so forth. Actually, that tree started to decline after, I would say, two years after the damage was done. There was no, from my perspective and based on my professional opinion, there were no signs that the tree was in decline after two years. So, a lot of times, it's not directly visible, trees are so big a lot of times. You know, it's like a large ship before it changes direction, it takes enormous, it takes a lot of time, so with trees too, you might not see anything for quite some time, but the tree now is in decline, and I think that started with the certain damage that was done to the root system. So, yeah, that's, yeah.
Yeah, thanks.
One of the other pieces of this that is critical though is, which helps if we can get in there with the tree impact assessment discussion, but oftentimes, this is an unknown cost factor for residents. So, they're shocked to find that there's these requirement for a tree protection plan. The actual percentage of the cost relative to the project that they're doing, and they're going to be spending fifty to a hundred thousand dollars, in addition, their tree protection plan may cost them two thousand dollars. They're shocked about the two thousand dollars, that's a lot of money. It's a relatively tiny percentage of the actual cost of their project. But what we're trying to figure out how to do is avoid the surprises so that people can factor in, I got, you know, my permits, you know, and first time anybody finds out what have they to pay for Montgomery County to get a building permit, it's shocking. But once you understand that's part of the process, then you can plan for it, factor it in, it's not a surprise. We want to try to figure out how to avoid those surprises.
This gets also to that idea we talked about at one point where maybe we could have an annual thing or a periodic thing where contractors would come and understand it, not that we'd be recommending it, but we just certify that they've gone through it, because I can tell you, in my own case, when we've had certain types of work done, if the person's familiar with the process, you know, kind of knows how to approach you on and how those things work, there are fewer surprises. And not to say that people shouldn't be able to pick who they want, but that can make a difference too.
Yeah, yeah, that was, early on, one of the first things Jan did was establish the contractors seminar. It's something we want to do again, and we definitely have the background and all the information put to it, so it's something that we will do, as well as the information will be on the website, but.
Some of the other things, silt fence, if it's required, if it's near trees, I typically recommend if the county allows that, and that's actually one other thing I wanted to highlight is the, you know, being in Tacoma Park, the county has the planning and zoning authority, it makes things more complex. They, people go, residents, the property owners go for their building permits and their plans to the county, and then on top of there, overlaid is the city's process, and that sometimes creates some difficulties as well. But typically, in critical root zones, if silt fence is required, I'd prefer to use filter log, it sits on top of the ground, it doesn't need to be transed in. Root pruning or tree pruning is another key tree preservation measure, particularly if there's excavation, so if you have a piece of equipment that's digging, quite often roots get damaged beyond the area of excavation. So, root pruning is typically done just outside of the area of excavation to have a nice clean cut, makes it easier for the tree to heal, and roots get damaged closer further away from the tree only.
Can I back up a step? I'm sorry, interrupt you again. So, a tree impact assessment as opposed to the protection plan is required in a bunch of cases. Is it very common that you are going to do a tree protection plan, but you don't need to do a tree impact assessment?
I would say-
Because I'm a little, I am, I think a bunch of residents are confused.
At this point, do a tree impact assessment.
Yeah, because that's what it says here.
It's confusing. It's been a little confused. We realize, I think, that there was some maybe left, the code's been amended a number of times. I think there's some confusing language.
Oh, so it's been in and out, okay.
The important thing is to do the tree impact assessment first.
Everyone should be doing that.
Everybody should do that.
I'm good.
Then, protection of root areas and soil compaction mitigation, that's typically done with six inch layer of wood chips and then plywood underneath sometimes or wood protection matting. Air spading may be required as well, and I'd mentioned the air spading, sometimes early on in the process, exploratory air spading to determine, you know, where can footers go, where can a foundation go, and that would be done early on in the design process as well. Typically, I'm involved, and then we can, you know, sometimes relocate foundations of footers as needed. Storage and staging areas, discuss that in construction entrance locations. The tree protection plan implementation, it may require for more complex projects at pre-construction meeting, for example, at the middle school project in Tacoma Park, we had a pre-construction meeting. Site inspections, once the tree protection measures have been installed, so that's after the tree protection plan permit has been issued, then after the inspection, if things are okay, then construction can start, and then I typically try to do periodic inspections Sometimes bonds are required if trees are impacted, so trees are preserved on a tree protection plan, so to make sure that trees are properly preserved, particularly larger trees, from time to time, I require that a bond be posted, and that's typically in relation to a tree protection plan. The bond amount is equal to the tree removal cost and then also the replanting requirements. Trees, this can be trees on the property in question, but it can also be trees on an adjacent property to make sure that if the tree were to decline, the adjacent property owner is not stuck with the cost of removal or replanting requirement. Typically, the bond period is for two years from completion of the project, and then there's different ways for people to post a bond, that's also all in the city code. There's also the possibility of a bond for tree removal permit, I've never used that. Then, the, again, the bond must be secured for two years, and then at the end of the bond period, I'll go out and evaluate if the tree's in good condition, and then if so, the bond can be released.
Did you say, a bond may be required in certain cases? Did you say what those certain cases might be, or is it case by case, or?
It's a bit case by case. It's typically when there are larger trees that are fairly close to an addition where the tree preservation measures, we try to preserve the tree as best as possible, but it still could be that a tree may start to decline, so it's kind of a safety measure to make sure that, if that happens, that, you know, the, particularly also for trees on an adjacent property, but also for trees on the property that they're, you know, this is also the case, I think, when a property is developed, that there's a bond so that the person doing the work, or the person purchasing the property is not stuck with the damage done by another party.
Thanks.
And the pre-planting credit was discussed earlier, so if people can, to address the concern about replanting costs and to encourage tree planting in general, the city council amended tree code to allow for credit for tree planting prior to removal request. That was an amendment that was made in 2011. There's particular criteria, that's all in the city code. The pre-planted tree must be a minimum size of an inch and a half in caliper, purchased from a nursery and registered within ninety days of purchase. This is the last slide, the end is in sight. The enforcement part, so before I get into that, my objective is always to work with people as best as I can, and I think enforcement is kind of a last resort if for some reason, you know, there's not a resolution possible. So, the inspections I mentioned as previously, I can post stop work orders in certain situations or issue notice of violation or issue citation. Typically, the, it must be pretty significant violation for me to do so, and then, you know, I always try to communicate with the contractor or the property owner in question. I think the other thing, if there's a problem, always look for the solution and come up with the solution. I think there's always a solution and to work towards that. And then, the other situation is for trees removed or excessively damaged in violation of the city code on approved tree protection plan, and then the replacement requirement is ten percent of the canopy, this is a pretty significant replacement requirement, but it's really to deter people from removing trees without approval or being careless, you know, when there's a tree protection plan. And that's the end, this presentation. Are there any other questions at this point? I'm sure there's other questions.
There will be many questions. I don't know.
Want to go through the survey?
We want to just go through like top line just to-
Yeah, I'll make it very fast.
Can I, before you do that, can I ask one question? So, in the replacement species, in the replacement criteria, the kind of species is accounted for? So, if it's a mulberry versus an oak that's coming down, that's accounted for?
So, first of all-
It's a two-part question.
Yeah.
That's the first part, and the second part is, and then are, is what, if anything, is encouraging replacement with a more desirable species?
So, the, can you repeat the question one more time?
First question, I think, and I think I know the answer, in the, for trees that are being removed, that get a permit to be removed.
Right.
If it's an oak, there's a higher replacement value than if it's a mulberry or some other undesirable species, right?
Well, the undesirable species is always have to normal replacement requirement criteria.
Yeah, okay, and then what, what if anything encourages a private property owner to plant a desirable species as opposed to a less desirable species?
So, the city code, or on the city's website, there's a tree planting list, so people can choose from that. So, typically, the, you know, if, there's four categories, category one, two, three, and four, so if a large canopy tree is removed, then the replanting requirement needs to be in the same category, but the city code does not specify what particular tree, but it does specify category, yeah.
This survey was first advertised in January and closed in May, so we had quite a few months of its availability, and people took advantage of that, five, over five hundred people responded to the survey. I'm not sure, what do I, how do I move it forward?
Down key.
Down key. No. Slowly but surely, there's got to be, maybe a page down. There we go. And all the responses were residents, we didn't get much response from contractors or non-residents. Interesting responses by ward, you'll see that wards one, two, and three, almost the identical number of people responded in the one-twenty range, and right behind it, wards four and five, almost the identical number, in fact, the identical number of people responded, twenty-one each, and then award six, we had almost forty people respond. The overall assumption is that the majority of people thought that the tree canopy and the city's role in preserving tree canopy was very valuable. And in terms of how important are trees to you and your neighborhood, again, overwhelming majority, seventy-four percent said very important. The other thing that interested me was, how do you feel about the number of trees in your neighborhood? The sixty-three percent right amount of trees, not too many, not too few, just about right, so they're that, in that category. Again, a pretty even mix between how familiar people are with the tree ordinance and the permitting process, which is a good thing, fifty percent of the respondents said very familiar, forty-six percent somewhat familiar, so overall, people are indicating that they are aware of and know. Years ago, that was a big issue, what tree ordinance, tree ordinance, what tree ordinance? I think we've crossed that threshold now, and everybody knows we have a tree ordinance. Again, strong majority of people believing that there should be changes to the tree ordinance, just over seventy percent. And in terms of those that responded, we had quite a few people who had an experience with our tree protection permit process, so almost half of those that responded had gone through the tree ordinance for one reason or another, and a pretty even mix about whether it met their expectations or not. Was the application process easy to understand? Again, an important thing for us, over sixty-six percent said yes. Did you receive a decision in a timely fashion? Sixty-six percent said yes. Do you think the current tree planting requirements, there's something missing in that question.
Are appropriate.
Yeah, so there, the majority, almost sixty percent said too high, so there's definitely a feeling that people have a reaction to the number of tree replanting requirements that we have. This first question here is about whether or not a comment period should be required for a tree removal permit. Pretty much evenly split between people saying yes or no about a comment period in general, with around forty percent saying yes and forty percent saying no. Do you think the fifteen days is an appropriate length of time? The majority said no, too long, followed pretty, almost the same by the number of people that said yes, they thought it was appropriate length of time, so again, pretty well split. In discussing the issue about a waiver, this question was trying to get at, right now, it's waiver if it's dead or if it's a hazard that can't be remedied, and so we asked if they thought waivers should be issued for other reasons like undesirable species or a tree in decline, and majority of people responded that they, yes, that they would like to see us redefine that waiver criteria. Of course, if you've got a balanced goal of trying to keep your canopy or even expand your canopy, then the more trees that you give waivers and no replanting requirements, the less likely you are to keep up with maintaining canopy. Current tree ordinance allows denial of a tree in good health, do you think that the city should be able to do that? Interesting responses, forty percent said no, thirty, almost seven percent said yes, so pretty even split, and then twenty-three percent of people just not sure. This question related to the tree commission and said, "Do you think there's an adequate opportunity to appeal permit decisions through that tree commission?" A majority of respondents said yes. Do you think other tree-related decisions should be allowed to be reviewed or appealed by the tree commission? Majority said not sure, so that seems pretty reasonable, people don't really spend a whole lot of time thinking about this and in their day-to-day. This is a question getting at whether or not our requirements for pruning more than five percent of live canopy should require the tree impact assessment, and forty-four percent didn't think there should be any permission required, thirty-seven percent thought it should be expanded to ten percent versus five, so the feeling there is less supportive of the current ordinance as we have it. This is a real shrinking of the question, we had a very long question on this one, all the reasons that you need a tree protection plan and the potential impact and cost of that, and do you think it's reasonable for the city to require this added expense in order to protect the trees in these cases? And the answer, forty-seven, almost forty-five percent said yes, they thought it was reasonable, thirty, almost thirty-three percent said no, and nineteen, not sure. And then, lastly, we don't require permission for installation of a fence, do you think we should change that law? The overwhelming majority of people said no, they don't want us to add that to the tree protection or tree permit process. And that is the end of that particular piece of analysis. It was very interesting to do, we haven't done this before, so we don't really have anything to compare with, but I thought, I thought it overall gave us a lot of very interesting information, and as we kind of drill down and look ward by ward, we can take another gander at some of what the implications of that might mean.
And then, there were hundreds of pages of additional verbal, written comments.
Now, we do have that, we do have that on the city's website related to the agenda item. Again, we'll be moving those after tonight's meeting onto the tree ordinance page on the webpage, so we'll have all this data, that, all the reports that were done tonight, as well as the tree survey. And depending on what your opinion is, if you want us to put the ward by ward survey on, we could add that as well, or just keep it collected. collected. It just kind of depends on your opinion on that.
Councilwoman DeBala?
Yeah. Unrelated question. Can you and Yan, at some point, not tonight, update the information you gave us about trends in permit protection plans and impact assessments? So what we have now is going up to fiscal nineteen first three months. And it'd be interesting to see if the trend of dramatically increasing over the last couple of years has helped.
Yeah, we'll run those numbers, again, both for number of permits as well as number of trees impacted. And I'm hoping we can do it from like fourteen through the current. So we have a picture over time.
Thank you.
Great. All right. Well, that was a lot of information tonight. I think it was a good foundation for then, when we come back and meet with representatives from the tree commission and the committee on the environment to take up the pieces they've been working on and move us forward. So thank you for this. And I think it was a good discussion to continue our work on it. So, thank you.
You're adjourned for a few weeks?
We are adjourned for a few weeks. We will see everyone back here on July 10.